I think we got White House on the phone, so why don't we just get started, huh?
Um, so Mr. Carmen, um, Stephen Carmen is also on Zoom, so he's a member of the Roundtable.
All right.
He's on Zoom and promoted his channels as well as Anita Hardy.
Good, good. Okay. Well, glad to have those folks there. So they just, what do they got to raise their hand and just chime in when they want?
You just chime in.
Chime in.
Okay.
They're set up to speak.
So we got some new stuff here, but we'll get it figured out as we start talking. It's a smart speaker, I guess, so. Why don't we start off by introducing ourselves at the table and then let's go ahead and pick up the panels. So why don't we start on this side? Hi, I'm Kent, a member of the Roundtable.
John Gator, and I'm one of the trustees here in town.
Lisa Chauvet, a member of the Roundtable.
Torhamon Mayor.
Wyatt Schwenning, a courteous part, member of the Roundtable.
Rebecca Kenny, trustee.
I, Eric Sarter, member of the Roundtable and chairman of the One Life to Plan Commission.
Ashley McDonald, trustee.
Patty Garcia, town administrator. Want to go around?
Yeah, sure.
Bob Gallin, public works director.
Megan Smith, public works W director.
Crystal Ecker, town clerk.
Victoria Rumpel, our finance director.
Ed Jones, water treatment superintendent.
Okay.
One more over there.
Dave Meyer, staff agent.
Okay, and panelists?
Tim Whitehouse, trustee, commissioner on planning.
Anyone else?
Stephen Carmen, Roundtable.
Anita Hardy, Roundtable.
Happy as a town attorney.
Can't do without him. Mayor Poston, can you listen up here shortly? So let's go ahead and go. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so just explain what's happening. This is an owl camera, and as you speak, and we tested it earlier today. Um, the people that are on Zoom are seeing whoever it is that's speaking. Um, we can see, I think, up to three different people individually, and then the, the picture of the room is across the top. And so those, so those that are sitting here, it's important that you speak clearly so that the people in the back can hear you because we don't have any true microphones, just the microphone that's picking up for the Zoom, Zoom and for the recording purposes. So just so you know how it's all working.
Okay, we ready?
Yes, sir.
So real briefly, Megan is here with, with us and Dave, it was only the three of us that kind of put this together. Megan did most of the heavy lifting on it. But she made me get up here and say something. So only have four slides, so bear with me. You've seen some of these slides before, I think they've been in a couple of presentations, just a real high level overview of the utility. And I won't even read every bullet here. I think most of y'all probably already read this, but maybe instead just emphasize some of the bigger points and really one of the big points on this slide for, for us is that capacity always has to exceed demand. It seems pretty simple. But we are right now in a situation where we are just squeaking by in terms of capacity meeting demand. And it's a very dangerous position for utility to be in. Long range planning is a must. Utilities function like a nonprofit. They have to be self-sustaining. Three funding sources that we have available to us, rates paid by our customers. Impact fees paid by developers and home builders through development, through the building permit process and loans and grants. And of course, we've got all of those three going on all the time. In general, expenses can divide it up between operations, maintenance and capital improvements. I would say the last bullet here, this regular periodic rate and impact the adjustments, that's something that we've heard over and over, and we're in complete agreement that that's the, the right and proper way to move forward from here on. So some of this is a little bit updated from what you've seen before. It's just a quick snapshot of where the water treatment plant expansion project is. And just as a quick reminder, it had three primary goals. Eliminate the liquid discharge from the current water plant, which is not in compliance with EPA requirements, and we're currently under a consent order for the water plant that requires that we change that process by 2025, I believe. Improve the taste and odor, which we all know is important, and increase the capacity for really for current and future growth, but primarily for future growth. Design philosophy, both of these plant expansions are take long view. We're trying to avoid future surprises from a treatment and utility point of view. Design for future expansion now, prevent wasted dollars later. We basically got two future expansions in our, in our future. This one that we're doing right now, which is going to take us to about twenty-four thousand population and a ladder expansion, it would take us to around thirty-five and those, you know, population projection numbers are aligned with comprehensive plan and really all the other infrastructure plan. And of course, that alignment with the comprehensive plan and all of our utility master plans is pretty critical for everything to work together with, we should. Or leave that. So we did get the sixty percent design cost estimate in. It was roughly thirty-one million. We expect a ninety percent design cost estimate, which is just a cost estimate based on the ninety percent complete design package, not ninety percent of a cost estimate. Expected in February. We hope to award the contract in March, begin construction in June, shortly thereafter. And we need to get this plant operational by summer of 2024. Waste water plant. We recently got the ninety percent design cost estimate. It's significantly higher than we anticipated. We are in the midst of value engineering that down. We're currently down to about forty-seven point three million. We've got more coming. That process is not finished yet. We'd be happy to talk about kind of what got us here. But there's more to do in terms of getting this cost closer to where it needs to be. And it's roughly got the same construction schedule as the water plant. We intend to start construction this spring, mid, mid this year and start up again, uh, pretty much in conjunction with the water plant startup because they kind of go together. So there's a little bit of information here about right now, we're a little bit under the gun at the wastewater plant for hydraulic and organic loading. And there are pretty severe civil penalties for violations of some of those limits that we're subject to. And one of, Dave, do you remember what this one is? Twenty-five dash five dash six oh eight? Is that the organic loading?
Yeah, that's for violation of anything in the permit.
Anything. Fifty-five grand a day per violation. So violations are, need to be avoided at all costs. And that's it for what I have. Megan's going to come up and take us the rest of the link. You may find either myself or Dave kind of chiming in as we go.
Maybe we'll Patty in even.
Yes.
Of course. Surprise, 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 of course. So this is of course not, um, the most exciting topic for us to be here. It's not a super pleasant topic. But it's critically important, obviously, as everybody here knows. So we're just going to kind of jump right in. So just to give some grounding, this again is, um, a, a table that you, that the board saw that was in our packet and a presentation that we gave last October. Just to get some background on where we are. We're starting with water rates and then we'll kind of step forward into sewer rates next. So just to know how we're going through. Um, you can see that we were, you know, over time, there definitely have, have raised and, and even lowered rates. But there for several years, we held pretty steady. Um, and then you can see this, um, the significant rate that, that, that the town of Wellington has dealt with through 2021. To get a little bit more into that, those recent rate increases, just to kind of remind you, um, we did go through a, and we'll touch on this as we go through a little bit more, but there was a rate study that was, um, we hired a Willard Current an engineering firm to perform a rate study for us. Um, they did develop uh, some recommendations, a model and some recommendations that was some further review, internal review with our staff. We made some additional revisions to the model that was provided, making it a little more reflective to our needs directly. But it did result in a recommendation of some pretty significant rate increases needed. Um, and they rolled out kind of this way in October of 2020. And within became effective in October first of 2020 and then January first of 2021. With that first big rate increase, base rate increase of thirty-five dollars that also included some tier rate adjustments. And then again, that significant base rate increase up to sixty-six dollars where we are right now became effective January once, just a little over a year ago. Now, we are, um, as a reminder, again, referring back to the rate presentation, or it was rather a large combined presentation that happened in October of last year. And so just a couple of months ago, and it's really what spurred the right, the Roundtable, Resident Rate Roundtable Development. There were, uh, some water rate recommendations made at that time that included, uh, for our, our finance staff at that time, that included a proposed tier rate adjustment of twenty-seven percent as well as um, what we're terming a compressed tier structure. So it was one thing that was referenced in that previous. I'm actually going to go back to that one. You can see our tier rate structure there has remained constant over the last thirty years or so. And there was some suggestion and recommendation from the board to staff to consider looking at compressing that tier structure. And by that, I, I'll get into a little bit, but having those tier rates be a little bit more compressed, that you can switch to the next tier level sooner, sooner in the structure really promotes efficient water use and kind of dings the highest water users more than the lower water users. So we did, um, that was recommendation that was, that recommendation was followed and proposed in those, in the proposed rates that came out in October. Now beyond that, there's been some additional conversation, um, of course, that came up with Resident Rate Roundtable, some great ideas that we wanted to implement. Not the least of which is the, looking into the possibility to gift, is that what we, transfer, transfer some general fund dollars into the water fund to help offset some of those costs. Additionally, it was decided at the end of last year to dedicate the entire first tranche of the American Recovery Plan Act dollars to the water fund. So all of these scenarios that we run today did already have accounts for that one point three million dollar transfer, give or take, um, into the water fund. But then we also have a couple of structured, uh, scenarios that include, um, this general fund transfer. Now, I just want to cap, it's not a caveat. I want to make sure you all understand that we, um, have done some really good research and digging into the water model. It, it is not a model that was generated by, created by any of the three of us that have been doing the digging into the model though. With that in mind, there was, I have a revision of a slide that I'll make sure you guys get. So this is the slide that you have in your, in the packet. And I have a revision, a revised slide I want to jump to next though, but I, I'll make sure that you guys get this. So I apologize for that. And there's a couple of reasons why it happened. So let's see. First of all, I guess the, I made an oversight when I was in the model, looking at how, um, the, the annual tier rate structures played out so that the base rate can combine with the tiers. And I was trying to accommodate the fact that we wouldn't be having the new rates for the whole twelve months. And in doing that, I made a, I assumed something that was incorrect in how the model is functioning and I, I reduced the number of months incorrectly. So that's why those numbers with this 2022 show a bigger deficit than what you see here in 2022. All right. So I had, I underestimated the revenue that we would be getting. So I apologize for that. But this one is the updated slide. I did want you to see though, that all of these, these rates kind of play out in a similar fashion in terms of we still end up with a rate deficit in 2023. That's mainly because we don't have a one point three million dollar influx in 2023 as we're, what we've got with the, the water fund transfer. So there are this option two A.
Quick question. Quick question.
Yes.
That one point three, isn't there another one of those coming?
There is.
Is that considered?
It is not in here. And it can be, for sure.
Fine.
We didn't want to make any assumptions.
Got it. Just want to make sure we don't lose sight of that.
Definitely. And I'll bring it up later because I do actually propose an option for sewer rate of using the tranche there. But I think it could be very beneficial to keep that in the waterfront as well. So I want to highlight that option two A is the most similar to what has been recommended fairly consistently going back to when we started these recommendations from Willard Current in, in like the end of 2019 and into early 2020. Um, it was showing a significant, these significant rate increases to get the base rate up to like sixty-three or sixty-five dollars. And then it was showing twenty-five percent increases to the tier rates in subsequent years for like five subsequent years. So this is the model that kind of most aligns with what has previously been proposed. However, that didn't take into account the possibility of a general fund transfer into the water fund. So in doing that, you, you can end up with something, you know, with a, a situation where we could increase the tier rates a little bit less. Because there is that transfer coming in. Right. So I definitely know we will come back to the slide and I will make sure that you guys get an updated version of this too for your consideration afterwards. Okay?
And we'll need to update the packet online. Yeah.
So we're going to move into sewer rates, as I know we're going to all come back to this, but please, if there is an important question, please interrupt me. I'm fine with that. Okay. Kind of the same pattern though, historical rates, really the last time that sewer rates were updated was 2016. We've had the, the, a constant base rate and usage rate for the last five years and that's coming back to bite us a little bit. We did both, and I didn't highlight this in the water rates, uh, historical water rates. There was a pretty significant increase in the impact fees last year, middle of 2020, for both water impact fees and sewer impact fees. So those are the fees that developers pay. Um, over two thousand dollar increase for the sewer impact fee just last year. So with, um, suggestion of the board as well as, as the Roundtable, but even prior to that, all of internal staff understand that we would like to go about the outreach, would like to go about the outreach for the sewer, um, rate increase differently than we did for the water rate increase. It's been really important to the board and we listened. Um, we have done significantly more outreach with this effort. Um, not the least of which are probably one of the most successful, I think, was the Resident Rate Roundtable. Um, but you can see here the, the different sources that we've had, um, just online postings or is it, I don't know. Did everybody get to see the full sewer rate or the video, SRF loan video that our internal communications excellent specialist did for us? Just bumping her up. I'm sure she's watching.
Did anybody not see that? Cause it was good.
It was really, really good.
Well done.
Um, so just a little snippet of some of the, of the outreach that we've done. Um, again, which did culminate in the, the Roundtable. Um, this is our kind of effort in emphasizing a lot of those recommendations. I really hope if there's a Roundtable member here that doesn't think that this is a fair representation, please speak up because I don't want to misalign in our understanding from what, what we heard from you all. But definitely, and you'll see this later in the, in the presentation where we're trying to highlight the, the ways and the places that we consider their recommendations in, in looking at new ways to do some of the funding and, uh, loan acquisition and that sort of thing. So I'm not going to read this through to you as we just did here from Anita last week and other members. But that does kind of get us to, um, the assumptions that we're utilizing to, to model, um, anticipated sewer rate increases and needs. So at this point, given the, um, the disappointingly high number of the, the wastewater treatment plant, um, ninety percent design cost estimate. We did need to increase that loan amount. I do very much believe that four eight million dollar loan amount is way conservative and high, will be well under that. But for modeling purposes, that has remained constant across all of these, um, rate, um, scenarios. We have moved to considering a thirty-year loan term. All conversations with the, um, Grants and Loans Unit at the authority have, can, seem to align with, that we should very well qualify for that. It's not a hundred percent. It has to be determined by their engineering unit that, um, that all of the construction, the loan term has to be at or less than the useful life of the components of the plant that are built. So I believe that it will need that, but just a caveat, it's not a hundred percent sure that we can get full thirty-year, but I definitely know we can get more than twenty. Um, we are still assuming a two point two five percent interest rate, which I think will be close to that, but I think that's also conservative. So hopefully we can come in a little bit below that as well. Um, for these modeling efforts, we did assume, uh, that three hundred and ninety thousand dollar transfer from the general fund to the sewer fund across all scenarios. So all of these kind of base assumptions are the same. And I have assumed, we've assumed a five percent annual increase in sub, the subsequent five years. So the rates that you'll see every subsequent five years, there's a five percent increase on top of that. No more any of the huge steps, um, again. Now this will result in a shortfall in every one of these scenarios resulting some shortfall into our fund reserve policy. Uh, I, just as a reminder, that's the, um, the internal policy of, of needing to have a hundred and ten percent of our annual debt service in reserve at all times. Um, but in, you know, it is, there's a, a clause in the policy that does talk about you can, um, dip into that or have a shortfall, so long as you have a plan to come back out of it, uh, probably within one to three years. And all of these scenarios, I think there was one that I got up to like four consecutive years, but, um, that would be something that the board would need to approve and, and then auditors would be checking on it correctly because we meet our own internal policies. Yeah. And I did make sure that we weren't ever dipping into it by like fifty percent. We're, we're looking at like fifteen, maybe up to twenty on an occasional year, depending on the combination of, of, of base and usage rates.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Please.
It was my understanding that we had to have a fund balance that was at or more than the debt service for this specific loan that we want.
Right.
So these shortfalls don't compromise that, right?
Yeah, yeah. And the, uh, yeah, we can get into that. Their, their fund balance reserve is much, uh, less stringent than our own internal fund balance reserve. However, their, what they call the rate covenant is pretty strict and that's the revenue that you make annually versus what you spend out.
Right.
So yes, for sure. Not putting any of those qualifications at risk.
Okay.
Um, so you can see, I won't run through this exactly, but I do want to let you know when I say base assumptions, that's just referring to those set of four bullets up above. So that first scenario is just those four bullets. The second scenario is those same assumptions, but we're looking at a stepped increase, which was a recommendation by the board, uh, by the Roundtable. And then that third scenario is, um, looking at, assuming that second tranche of the, um, American Recovery Plan Act funding coming to the sewer fund. Um, right. So this is, um, this is what was in the packet. I'm going to jump to the next slide. So nothing actually changed here, but per request of a couple of, of two different board members that were looking to consider a combination of scenario two and three. Um, I did create that and that's now scenario four at the bottom. And that is a singular version of doing that. There's lots, there's ways to combine some of these rate increases, but in the end you sort of get eventually to this, to this general same, uh, place. But so I, I wanted to play out, um, you know, a couple of years because it's not just, you know, what happens this year, there would be a continued rate increase, especially in the consideration where we're talking about like a step, a more of a step increase. So you have that lower step coming in and then the next year you'd have to have a, another fairly large step. And then from there you would have that percent increase into the future. Um, so that's the only places. So in scenario two and scenario four, you'll see that like from 2022 to 2023, that's definitely not five percent. That's much more than five percent increase in that step. But then in the subsequent years. Any questions on that part?
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
On, on that, um, base rate zero, the, looking at the, uh, the usage rate. I want to understand the usage rate for a minute here. So, so, uh, what's the usage rate under?
So our base rate for sewer includes the first three thousand gallons.
Okay.
And then the usage rate is for every subsequent one thousand gallons. And again, just to remind everybody and anybody listening, that base rate, or excuse me, your, your sewer usage rate is based upon your kind of what they call the winter quarter average of your water use. So it's, uh, January, February, March. Um, here in Wellington, some places it's December, February, but yeah, January, February, March of water consumption. That's what they assume is, we assume is indoor use only. And if you're, if you have a really large family and you wind up with five thousand gallons of use in that, in those months on average, then you would have the base rate plus two usage rates.
Yeah, your, your, your storm drainage and your, uh, authority drainage.
No, that, I know exactly. And I, I have a copy of the water bill to, to, to show you guys too. That unfortunately, the way our water bill is set up right now, the sewer bill is not, um, itemized. So you just see sewer and a charge. Okay. So you don't get to see that some of it is a base charge and some of it. So I know some people, their charge currently is only twenty dollars and sixty cents because their winter quarter average is less than three thousand. Um, so it's just the base rate. But if you have a large family, it would be more than that and you wouldn't know that there's a, that there's a, a base rate and a, and a usage rate. So that's something that we can look at and castell our billing system to differentiate.
Do we know the average for most citizens in town?
Four, four, yeah. So in the way that we measure that, it means that somewhere between four and five. Cause if you're using, because it just clicks up a thousand gallons.
Are the tiers changing in the, in this model versus what the existing tiers are?
No, because there, it's not really tiered in the same way because it's just that single extra usage charge. There's not any additional usage charges. If you did have an average winter of six thousand, let's say, it would still be currently six dollars and fifty cents for every thousand that you use over. So there's no, no change in how that structure is, is from now versus the proposed rates.
Okay. That's something I guess I do want to put out there then, if we're considering changing the tiers for water rates based on usage. If, if the tier.
No, she hasn't used a drink change too.
The use, the rate itself would change.
Yeah.
But not the tiers. Talking about changing, like, like we compress the water once, you're probably the same thing for sewer. And adding like a second, third, because like water, we have like tier one, tier two, tier three. I think she's saying the same thing for sewer. Could we do something like that? Would that make sense?
You could. Um, however, it would be, I mean, the reality is.
It would complicate.
Is, this is folks' base level of water use. So would, I'd be, I hate to use the word punish because that sounds awfully strong, but it's hard to get below this water use. So if this is their indoor standard use. That makes sense.
The real reason that water rates had that extra tier to this because of the irrigation in the summer and that doesn't happen with sewer, right? So much more constant across the year. It doesn't have this giant peak in the summertime, the way the water does.
Thousand gallons is pretty compressed already, isn't it? You have to tune it down to five hundred at that point.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a level of complexity that, um, you know, the reason why the water rates tiers typically kind of go up in the summers is because it costs a lot more money to produce that water. And you don't really get that if the rate is fairly constant across the whole year.
Okay. And that's, that's what I was wondering. If I don't want us to make or consider a change that we then come back later and say, well, why didn't we compress them like we were doing for something else? I don't want to do this in two steps and then rethink our whole method a month after we potentially adopt the rate. So that's what I was asking, but it was related to the compressing of that. Thank you.
Stephen, did you have a question?
Not, not really a question. Um, the, the wastewater is much simpler than drinking water. There is not tiered at all. So if we introduce tier and wastewater, we're creating more complex, more complex situation. That is essentially what it says though, is the tier with the use of trade, four thousand plus. Right? Yeah. Okay.
Well, it's a one-time fee, four thousand plus.
The, no, it's for every additional thousand gallons.
Yeah, it's basically one tier. It's one tier for wastewater. Yeah. I just want to make sure we're all speaking the same language here too.
That's a good clarification. Thank you. Okay, so I did produce some, um, just a kind of a graphical representation of what you could see happening, um, in the sewer fund. Now, with, with the, the scenario one, two and three, or, or our kind of no action alternative there at scenario zero. Now, one thing that, um, I would, I do want to highlight, um, doctor. Trustee Whitehouse, you picked up a PhD. Call you Doctor Whitehouse. Then trust me, Whitehouse, I asked this, uh, this morning is related to, um, on scenario three, he was asking of, of what point does the, uh, fund balance kind of rectify itself. And one thing I want to highlight And one thing I want to highlight is actually, um, the scales of these make it a little bit hard to read when you're looking at, so it's really hard to represent tens or even small hundreds of thousands of dollars on this plot because the scale of the axis is like six, seven million. And then also, we identified with Beck that, um, one of the ways that we have been representing in the sewer fund and that model that you guys have seen and played with is that that sinking fund that, um, you all, that the roundtable and that made a recommendation that we we isolate that sinking fund and create us some language that makes it only useful to the to the sewer rate or the sewer fund only. We had been separating the sinking fund balance from the actual fund balance. And the reality is the sinking fund, though we wouldn't want to use it for willingly expenses, it does count towards meeting our reserve policy. So we do want the language to keep it separate, but it does help us keep meet that hundred and ten percent reserve policy. They're not isolated from each other in that way. So that makes sense.
Double enough, right?
Exactly. So to, if you would, in most of these instances, and especially right here, um, Trusty Whitehouse in twenty twenty-seven, um, actually even in twenty twenty-six, you would already see this come back up to right at the red line.
Could you add that sinking fund amount to the top of each one of those?
You can, it makes the graph look really strange.
What if we just like a separate color?
Yeah.
Blue shows that and then like orange is, okay, if we add the sinking fund in, because then visually.
You have to remember though that the sinking fund doesn't kick in and then.
Till twenty-six.
Sure. Yeah, right.
So you have a little orange bar twenty-six on.
Only thing that's difficult about that is it makes the plot skew really bad because you think that we're at seven million now and we start getting further out. You, we end up with what looks like a, well, what is fundamentally a lot so that we can hopefully pay for future expansions, not with a forty-eight million dollar loan, but with mostly cash.
And this accounts for the the growth model that you had in there, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And I guess like, for me, I would hope that it's, for anybody that's listening, it's important to understand that without growth, we can't do any of this. Like, there has to be some growth because that's what funds, that's that sinking fund, right? For all those tax fees.
Yep.
And the other thing I kind of wanted to illustrate with this is that all of the scenarios that were presented, and this is not kind of by accident, they're, they all look kind of similar in how they impact the the fund balance. But how they impact maybe our community members could be different. So that's sort of, you know, us looking at creating options that can maybe impact our citizens differently, but still create the fund out that we need internally to to be successful.
Do you have a scenario four graph as well?
Uh, I don't because I knocked that out today.
Got it, got it. Interestingly enough, when I look at the model that I played around with compared to your scenario four, it it lines up almost exactly the same.
Good.
In terms of the base rate and the usage rate.
So kind of our our path forward here with with you all, um, in in conjunction with our resident rate roundtable presentation last week, you don't also heard from from Dave regarding our SRF loan. Um, one of the rea- or have we had the public hearing? A requirement of that public hearing, just to reiterate again, is that we do need to be able to show that we have increased rates enough to be able to support the debt service that we're applying for. And that has to be done before they will quote, um, approve the loan, which the approval process happens in a board meeting on March fourth. So we have, we're in a position, a tight position where we do have to have show a rate increase that can support the debt service in the in the month of February. Uh, that's the first bullet. I just wanted to pause and.
Uh, excuse me, Ms. Smith, this is Trustee Whitehouse. Could I ask a question or just a point of information? There's a, if we don't do this, the state will do it, correct? I mean, they will take it out of our hands and they will make this right. The other point is I'm under, my understanding is, I don't know if it's a new rule this year, but the application window is closing as well. And if we don't get this in, there'll be a six-month delay or something like that. Is that, could you clar- clarify that, please?
That is true. With the type of loan that we're looking for, which is called a leveraged loan, um, which means they have to go out and I'm looking at Dave to make sure I say this correctly. They have to go out and and they will sell bonds. Is that right? No, no, yes, yes. They only do that twice a year. And for us to make it into the one that will close, then the loan would close in May, essentially after they they make their bond sale. March, uh, well, no, that's the approval. The bond sale will happen in May. All right, or late April. And the we have to have the application in by last Friday. So good job, Dave did that. And if we don't make it on this one, then it's June and I think it's another six months before they do another bond sale for a leveraged loan.
We won't be able to start construction until we get the loan approval. So that puts the contractor on hold for well over six months.
Yeah.
And that's middle winter, you can't really start construction in the middle of winter.
And Trustee Whitehouse, also to your point, uh, this is the last application, the last round of the SRF before Build America by America kicks in, which has much more stringent American iron and steel requirements. Right now, we kind of get an exemption for iron and steel that's on a skid. My understanding is that the new one, if we wait, if we miss this window, will be subject to, the skids will be subject to iron and steel. And we're talking about millions of dollars in increased costs. We'll probably also see another higher round of Davis Bacon wages, which we're experiencing right now. Our our problem with the the cost is that Davis Bacon is coming in at, uh, you know, multiple dollars higher an hour than what our contractor actually wants to pay, so.
We had to go Davis Bacon.
Yeah, that's a requirement.
Federal dollars.
Kind of federal dollars.
Wow, that hurt.
All of these dollars are federal.
Those are the workers. I get.
Anita, did you have something?
You and Bob and Dave just stated everything that I was going to share about the leveraged loan. So, no, I'm good.
Yeah. Um, we did hear the board's, uh, request for an additional rate study or an updated rate study. Um, that is something that we will be looking to kick off soon. To have completed and at least have some of the fees updated for when we would come back to the board on a more regular cycle that we expect to be coming to you every year in September, um, for rates. September moving forward. Um, that would include looking at, you know, evaluation of administrative transfers, um, ensuring the equitable impact to residents and commercials, plus how we set up annual updates in the future. Um, we are, there was suggestions by the roundtable to make sure we continue to support the hardship, promote and support the hardship utility grant, which has already been funded by the board, thank you, for twenty twenty-two. Um, we are anxious to have some continued community involvement. Again, I know I've said this like five times, but it was a really successful experience, the roundtable, um, the resident rate roundtable for staff as well. And it was a lot of work. Um, but it was very, very successful. So, um, also, and this is a great plug, uh, to continue to implement our water efficiency program. I know that, um, Patty sent out an email today to the trustees and to leadership regarding a, um, an award that Hallie managed to get for us from the, oh my gosh.
Water Alliance?
Water, one Water Alliance, no.
Water now.
I sent it to the roundtable as well. I gave it to them since that was one of their recommendations.
Yes.
They were aware.
So we were made aware of that, um, award, uh, today, uh, for the water, uh, now alliance for help to develop and promote our efficiency program and education program. Um, and then, of course, continuing to turn over every stone for other financial solutions, which has included things like, I was on that call today with the EPA, our Denver office, EPA Region Eight, talking about WIFIA loans and any grants and loans options there. We have met with Senator Bennett's office. We've met with, um, Jonah Goose's office. We are continuing to search for grant and and, um, matching funds opportunities everywhere we turn. So both in the water and wastewater utility as well as in our street fund for sure. So this is just kind of a reminder, again, I know I hit that bullet pretty hard already about the timeline for a rate adoption. And that is where I I stop.
I just wanted to bring up, um, is the resolution that we recommended, uh, on the, it's not slash fund, whatever the.
This.
Sinking fund, thank you. The sinking fund, uh, is that going to happen during the same process? Because that's something that we feel strongly about, that we want to make sure it is.
Yeah.
Is passed before it gets misused, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
So I wanted to have this discussion before we started going down that road with the town attorney. But yeah, it's, he's been, he's been. Something y'all want.
Um, I also have a question, um, about the the hardship utility grant. One of the recommendations we had made was that we increased that grant so that it, did it get increased this year?
Not yet. So, um, because it wasn't utilized very much last year, I believe you had originally, I think the board had originally placed twelve thousand dollars in the fund. And this, and for twenty twenty-two, because only like five thousand dollars had been used, it was reduced to six thousand dollars. But I've always told the board, if we hit up against the maximum amount, I'm coming back to them, asking them for more money for the fund. So we have money in the board discretionary fund that could get moved and things like that. So, um, I don't feel that that limit of six thousand dollars is is a limit, is a hard limit.
And is there a plan to help get the word out that that exists? To the, I know, I didn't know anything about it until I was on the roundtable. I never heard anything, so.
We'll keep working it. I know we've put some information in water bills, um, that a lot of people don't open their water bills or they receive them electronically and they don't. I'm the same way. I don't open it. I don't even look at my email. I just see an amount taken out of my checking account, you know? So it's, so, you know, if we have other ways and ideas to be able to reach our residents, you know, we'll certainly do that. We'll definitely be out there more through, um, farmer's market and things like that. So we'll have more opportunity to, you know, do hard copies of flyers and things like that. So, yes, word of mouth is the most helpful. So as you've all talked to people and hear about people that are in need, please send them our way.
Can I ask one more question?
Of course.
So the board asked about getting a consultant to prepare the comprehensive rate study. I know this is going to sound really stupid, but is that really necessary? I mean, we know we need to increase rates for having this whole conversation. How big of a chunk of change is that that we're paying out of the sewer fund, right? Because it has to carry its own expenses. Is it more of a redundant process or is it something that has to be done?
So we have looked at, um, a couple of of ways to potentially decrease the the cost and time estimate with it. One of which is we don't want to generate or feel the need to generate a whole new sewer model. We feel really good and comfortable with our sewer model. However, um, it's, I would never say no to a a critical review of it by an industry expert, um, to identify efficiencies or, you know, uh, ways to optimize it. And the same will be true for the rate model and the the water rate model is something that we don't have in as robust a form as the sewer rate model and we really would benefit from that.
Didn't we just have a water rate study?
Yeah, it was very limited because.
Water rate increase.
I recall. Um, I guess I'm just wondering what the cost is versus the actual benefit? Because it kind of goes down that line of everything we talked about and efficiencies and not spending money we don't need to spend.
So really a question. Bump that around, do we really need it? Um, we have some really bright staff here, let's do it. Uh, I did reach out to one of the leaders in the industry. I was told what your last study cost and I sort of framed it. Um, I mean, it was very high. And Brett Tellis, which is a leader in this area, um, that they gave me a twelve to twenty thousand dollars estimate. Um, that was just off the top, you know, because I told him I didn't want to, I told him that I wanted really more critical analysis as opposed to a full rate model. Um, so I just asked him, you would still have to do a proposal and we would still have to do an IFP. But I just wanted to reach out and because I. So I just wanted to know what would cost. And he said some, I just went, oh, that's what he gave me. So, um, again, you know, we really have to go through the process a little bit, but I think that town of size, twenty would be an outside number. I mean, I wasn't really, we never spent more than twenty-five. Okay, and that was a full rate.
I just wanted, I mean, I'm just.
There is.
Important, that's a good question, Lisa. And I think that the best metaphor that I can use to explain the justification for it is trying to proofread your own work.
Yeah.
You know, when you're, um, writing a paper and you try and do your own spell check and grammar check, it's really easy to overlook mistakes or not get a full perspective. And this is such an important decision. And we've only approached it from a one-sided approach. We've either gone totally consultant or totally staff. And that's one of the reasons why we're here today is because sometimes the data that we had wasn't the best data to make decisions. So I think this is a, having an outside consultant is an opportunity to proofread or just double check to make sure that we're making the best decision with the best data possible.
And I, and I can add that the the rate information we have that they, that the consultants work on was only for residential.
Right.
It didn't look at school district, didn't look at HOAs, didn't look at, didn't look at anything beyond just the residential. So that's something we need to look at. And we've got PSD coming on with that big old school and we, they're getting, they're getting a killer deal on water right now because we don't have any way to figure out how much we should really charge them. We don't know. So I think long term it's going to pay off and get us set up straight with really good, um, models that we can use internally from that point on and just keep reviewing those rates every year. So that's my hope as your administrator.
And I would agree a lot with the comments that Lisa made because that's one of the things that was a frustration for the board is, you know, I was not on the board when we did the Woodwind and Current, but then we pretty came on right as I came on. And then shortly afterwards, Tyler like redid everything. Because it's like, well, it didn't include this and they didn't include this. And I think that's part of the challenge is we pay these people that aren't in Wellington to do all this work. What I like is the idea of, you know, what we did with the roundtable, right? We have Dave Meyer, you did an amazing job putting together something that allowed us to do that. And I think I like the idea of doing a roundtable. And then I like what Trustee McDonald said is, let's pay a consultant, but let's pay them to check our work. Not you do the work and then we fix it. Let's us put it together, then you come in and tell us, hey, you missed this big thing or you missed this big thing. And I think that's a big difference we got because that is something Wellington has put together for Wellington. Because who knows our town better than the residents who are paying the bills, the staff who's talking to them on a daily basis and understand the local problems. The problem is that we bring in outside consultants, they they do the best they can, but there's only so much that it can do in limited conversations with limited people. So I think I like the idea, let's have us do the work and then have someone check it.
Um, and I agree with everything everybody said, but for me too, and I, the reason I, I want to kind of hammer down this point is it's not necessarily, and I think it's very important someone comes in and checks their work. That's obviously very important. But that other perspective that I need is, for one thing, we didn't approach this equitably before, right? That's been called out many times. We've been trying to correct that since then constantly. So that view of it is something that needs to happen, all of our water users, as mentioned before. But the biggest thing in my perspective is, um, I want someone who knows water regionally, what's trending, what's going to happen in the future of water, like science of water, things that are happening that we can't foresee or forecast with models that we have here. I need someone with that, like, expertise to know where in northern Colorado, what's going to happen with water, what prices might happen or what are the things we haven't already very much expanded to consider? There's people who are professionals in this field that know and see way beyond that. And then they can also apply or let us know trends that other communities are doing with best practices potentially. And then, of course, they've seen, you know, fallout to water rates. You can do lots of recommendations of how to approach them above and beyond what we're doing or, you know, add their best practices. So to me, from our viewpoint right now, we have continuously expanded what we're seeing. So we feel really good about what we're looking at right now, especially compared to a year ago or two years ago. So we feel on top of the world, but I feel like somebody who is a water specialist or does this for communities bigger, smaller, everywhere, will have that their bubble, what they see is way bigger than us. So that's what I want applied to us because I don't want to be a year from now being like, dang it, why didn't we think of this and that and this? Kind of like how we were a year ago at this point.
And I just wanted to bring up, I think that's why it's important that we keep this roundtable, um, going because we. going because we've already worked in it, spent a lot of time on it. So if we can invest in that in the future, I think it's gonna, it's gonna help. So and not just this roundtable, but future roundtables for other, other issues. So.
What's the longevity of those studies? Can we expect that to be accurate for one year, three years, 10 years? I think a 12 to 20,000 dollar expenditure, once every 10 years is probably reasonable. Once every other year, not so much. If it changes that quickly, why are we spending so much money that something's just gonna be invaluable?
I would suggest three to five years. It also goes back to when you have to go out into the market again. Because that's one thing that anywhere you take a loan from anywhere, I mean, you wouldn't, they would wanna make sure that you had a, you know, a current plan, if you, if you will. So I think a three year, it won't be 10 years. I'm gonna put paint on that face.
Yeah, sure.
But it would be a three to five years. I've seen them along with five. But I've never seen every year, never seen every year. Okay. Kind of depends on what's going on in your environment too. I mean, I mean, you know, I come from really, you know, all the changes in terms of water. So it's a whole different environment. You know, I mean, there's so much changing, but it was never every year, cause you can't get it done. I'm not trying to be, it's just a huge amount of research. So I would say at least three years and maybe five if you still want.
Thank you.
So I think that's really imperative that we have studied done every three to five years. We've got a lot of variables in our water rates that can change. It's not just, you know, there's quite a few things that are, it's a commodity for us for sure. And it's tied to a pretty convoluted contract. And that can go up and down. We've seen it go up double in two years and it can go down. And you need to be able to reevaluate that, you know? And as you have growth, one thing we ever talked about is you have growth, some of this cost of this water should actually go down. You have a few more tap players, it should dilute your base rate a little bit, but that's something to be evaluated later. And that's what you need to study for. So.
And I think some of us like kind of toyed around with the idea that once the plants are built to kind of front load that growth, because the number of users is obviously tied to the revenue. And maybe that, I, maybe that changes so that the water rates don't have to keep going up and they can't go back down. If you front load your growth and then slow it way down, I mean, I know people don't wanna hear that, cause they don't want Wellington to continue to grow. And I moved here for a small town from Denver. So. But ultimately that growth is what's gonna pay for what we already have to do, right? Like we can't not do it. So.
Yeah. And that was our concern of, once we had this built in 2024, we just don't want a building or something staying empty.
Right.
We wanna actually utilize.
Ask a question.
Scared me.
So back on the, on the study, is that study on the water rates or the wastewater rates or both?
I just asked about water. So it's all a matter of.
Patty, I, I think that we would need, I would recommend that we would have that on both water and wastewater and keep the roundtable involved to provide some oversight. I really do think it's important that you have an expert work on those rates that can put in those components that while we think we know it all because we live here, there's components that we're not aware of. When you look at the water usage and, and thus then the wastewater costs or fees for some of our larger commercial, you're, you're correct. You brought up the school district, but also the grocery, you know, Ridley's, Cameron, Advance, take some of those larger businesses that I personally would have. Oh my gosh, I don't know how much studying I could do. I would never be able to make the recommendation on how to charge them for their water. And I don't, I think we need an expert. And I do think it's important that we continue as a roundtable to stay involved. We can help provide that check and ask those questions as well. So that's my two cents on that is to move forward with, with that component.
Well, I have a couple of comments. So I understand the desire to do this stuff in-house. The question is if we have these two big infrastructure projects, as fantastic of a job that Dave Meyer and the rest of the team did, I mean, how many hundreds of hours went into that wastewater model? And the question is, is that the best utilization of his time and expertise? And so that's, that's one comment. I mean, sometimes it just comes down to throughput. And the other comment was about water. I mean, several of us are taking that water literate leadership class down at CSU. Situation water is here is gonna be critical and it's going to continue to become a dwindling resource. And it is going to continue to become more expensive. It's just, that's what happens when we have limited supply. It's gonna become more expensive. So that's my take. I mean, there's, we're kinda a lot of different stuff, but that's the reality we're faced with in this region.
My question of the discussion we had about the consultant doing an outside study or a comprehensive rate study was evaluating both water and wastewater. So that in the future, when we're not looking at reevaluating or making changes to these, we're not doing this every single meeting for our entire term. We're addressing these in an incremental manner that's much more manageable instead of continually poking at our residents and changing rates. So that, that would just be something I would like to reinforce that the discussion was that when we talk about this as a comprehensive rate study, that includes both.
Yeah. And I think that makes sense. I think the timing of initiating something like that's gonna be tricky for you guys that are elected officials, because there's gonna be, I mean, it was just amazing to me being on the call last week and watching the Facebook chatter for other people that were on the call in the community. And so if, if we're gonna raise rates in February and then we're gonna initiate a rate study, that's backwards, right? And, and you guys are gonna get a lot of criticism for that, right? You may be up for it and that's cool, but it may make sense to maybe wait until the fall before you, you know, try to spend another 12 to 20 grand on a rate study rather than, you know, raising rates in February and then initiating a rate study to see if the rates are correct. Just my two cents.
Rate study would be for 23 and it would not be, it would be for the 23 budget. So right now, Megan has assumptions in her, in her model. And this would just, I mean, I don't want to say test the assumptions, but it would really look into those assumptions and see if we can change that for 23. Best practices would be that you would be changing rates with the budget in September, October, November, you know, with your normal budget process. That's best practice. You would change the rates with your budget. So you change them now, I mean, not in a bad way, you tend behind the curve a little, but you would get ahead of the curve. You could also build assumptions in there, but you don't increase the rates in January. I mean, you could, you know, you could play, play a little bit with those assumptions and, you know, and raise them, you know, maybe March again. Yeah. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, but there's some things that you could do again, not to double hit your.
Yes. And she is absolutely correct. We are, we, we're kinda doing things backwards right now because of the treatment plants and, and applying for the loans and things like that. So normally it would be, we'd be having water rates before you in September, October. And that's, so that's our hope to get, to get that information to you through the water rate study, September, October. So that way it's adopted. So those rates, those rate structures are adopted in your budget for 2023. And then like Vic said, either, you know, implement in January, you know, January reads, February billing, or however you wanna set it up. But at least we're ahead of the game as opposed to trying to play catch up and our residents planning to play catch up as well.
Well, and I would say that that's, I mean, that sounds reasonable, right? And then I kind of put on my resident hat for a second and I think, okay, you're about to give me another rate increase after I got hammered on water, right? Last year. To me, that would just more emphasize that stepped increase that we recommended. So that if you're gonna turn around and a few months from now, we're gonna be talking about an increase again, because everybody talks about the budget. If it's a stepped increase that extra few dollars isn't gonna blow up the world of this town. Because, I mean, it was a good point, like the Facebook fee during the meeting about what people were talking about and they're, they only have bits and pieces of information and they only hear the overview and they don't understand any of the details. And it's such a hot topic that, I mean, if that's a plan, you need to like say it now, so they have plenty of time.
And to do it every year. I mean, every year it's gonna be reviewed. We're gonna look at rates every year by September. You should have some information, the trustee should. And who knows what the rate study brings out? Maybe they find that they're reduced. I don't know. I mean, we'll just see what they bring. But you know, my, my goal is to make sure that this is in front of the trustees and in front of the public every year at the same time. So it's not a surprise to anyone. They'll be expecting, yep, we're just gonna be talking about this in September. I need to log in and listen. I need to pay attention. I need to bake those bullet points. And then, you know, move forward. So.
And is there gonna be a review of the administrative fees within both of those funds?
Yes.
I mean, there needs to be
Yep.
super duper transparency on what exactly every single one of those dollars is, because it's a lot of money.
Yep, we, we agree.
So a couple of questions. Roughly, how many sewer users do we have right now?
About 4,000.
Forty-two, twelve.
Forty-two.
Give or take a few.
And for water, what's that number? Like forty-four?
Slightly more than that.
Okay. So we'll call 4,300. So with those administrative fees, cause I do wanna bring that up. But you see on here, it says that we're gonna look at this in 2023. Is that a legally binding that we are required by law to have those administrative fees pull out of those funds? Or is that something that we have chosen to do as a best, best practice?
It's general best practice that the utilities pay the general fund for the services that it would have to pay for. And so payroll, accounting, label, those are, that's, and yes, your auditor looks at that.
Okay.
It's a normal practice. I don't see any evidence in the past that they've taken a hard look at that. I have been in a city where the auditor made a stop. I will tell you, I was in a city that we were aggressive with the fees for the general fund, not, not proud of that. They comp us, they comp us hard.
Okay.
So that is, so it's called an indirect fee study or, I mean, there's lots of different words for it. And I've seen your fees and Patty and I talked and said, well, you probably need to do an indirect fee study because I'm not sure how they line up. And it's very, an indirect fee study is generally very simple, believe it or not. How many hours are you working? So I think that we can do an indirect fee study as soon as we get a finance person and someone to help me out a little bit. But I think that we're there. I mean, I think we.
Well, so I guess the, the bigger question on that, because I mean, if, if that's something, it's the general best practice. So like if we, if we say, okay, we're gonna, because of the situation we are in, we're going to just say, you know, for the next three years, general fund, you are covering these costs. We understand they're indirect, but you're being covered. That the question is, is the auditors might look at us and then we can answer, this is why we're doing it. Is that something where now all of a sudden we're losing, we're getting taken to court, we're getting fined, or is it just something, hey, you're really, cause here's my thing with that. Those alone, a $974,000 transfer for this year to water over, call it 4,300 users. That's a $226 per household addition. Right there, if I divide that by 12, I can cut every single residence water bill by $18, just simply by saying we're gonna take that out of the water fund. Sewer is $200 a year. By 12, a $16 right there. And I understand if it, so if it's not something that we are going to get fined because we're doing it, if we can explain, this is why we're doing it. Then what we can do is that's not, we can say general fund, that's money that we're taking from other things that we're currently doing, whether it's more discretionary, whatever. Right there, I mean, you add $16 plus $18, I just took $34 off every single residence bill they get. So the question I have is I understand doing this study, why wait till 2023 and why not just say this is the situation? We can make a huge impact to the residents. We can figure out where we change other things. Because it's not just what money can we transfer into the water and sewer funds, it's what money can we not spend? Cause if we don't spend it in those funds, then that can go to pay the loan. And that's, that's significant.
And I'm confused though, because those administrative fees are still things that we have to pay for.
Correct. It gets paid out of the general fund. So that means that we as the board have to say, we're cutting other things. We're cutting our board discretionary fund or we're removing other, we're cutting the CAC's budget maybe, sorry. We're saying, hey, we need to find some other places that, but I think that our residents, if we were to say, hey, here are some things that I know we all like and love to have, but we're gonna have to do without for a couple of years. But I can cut $34 a month off your water bill if you're willing to do without these things. I think most of our residents would say, please do that.
I know. If that's a hard conversation to say, bam, I just saved us money without any consideration of where that would affect all the other budget concerns. So.
You're balancing a budget though. You're literally looking at, these are the things I wanna spend money on. It's just like your house, right? Are you gonna pay for things that feel like a need but are really a want? And then not pay your house payment? I mean, this is the equivalent of a house payment.
Conceptually, I, I hear you, but I think until we actually were to say in our budget, where, how that happens. And that's, you know, I mean, we spent how many months in advance preparing and approving a budget. So that's a lot to say, let's just do it right now. When that's an ongoing huge process for the budget each year. So I think that's a good consideration, maybe something to definitely build into 2023. But redoing the complete budget right now is, that's a lot. So I just wanna put that out there too. I agree with the concept. I agree with the purpose. I just wanna make sure that when we're saying bam, let's take $34 off in a public meeting and saying that's an option. I'm saying that we're not there yet. And if that were gonna be something we consider, we should definitely take the time and understand exactly how that works.
I, I would suggest that that back of the napkin sketch while is certainly illustrative. I mean, what does that mean? Are we cutting library funding? Are we cutting recreational programs? Are we cutting staff? Cause one of the things that's been clearly stated by the residents in the surveys is they want greater amenities and greater service. And so again, the napkin sketch is a value, but what exactly are you getting that money? I, I, I wouldn't support that without understanding what the ramifications are.
And I completely agree with you, trustee Whitehouse. It is. It's gonna require cuts, but the challenge that I have is that's, that's the same way that I work on my household budget. If we say, hey, we wanna buy a new car, that means there's other things I can't do. And what happens is right now, we're saying, well, if we're not willing to cut services, we're forcing our residents to go to their personal budgets and cut it out, cause they don't have a choice. They can't just say, I'm not gonna pay the water bill. And so yes, it would require us actually taking work and digging in. And I, I understand the desire to take more time, but let's say we take five months. Well, that's $150 every single one of our residents that have paid because we took however long to go do that. And I think part of the challenge is we haven't considered this. There's never been a discussion of let's just for three years, let's just, again, especially if we're not gonna get fined for this. It's only been, it, there hasn't been much discussion from this board about what can we as a town do without? We've been looking at how do we minimize the cost to residents, but it's been a lot more about how do we stretch it out or spread it over time versus saying what things can we as a town cut out of our budget so that it's not as big of an impact on our residents? And I think, again, yes, we have to figure out where, that's a lot of money to get cut out of our general fund budget. But I think we owe that to our residents to say, we're not just gonna ask you all to take the hit. We as a town are also willing to take a hit to get through this.
I just wanted to point out that we, as the roundtable actually talked about this extensively.
Sorry.
Every meeting, because it was our concern too. It's like, why can't we just move, move that around? So it's, cause it was such a high cost. And we didn't know about, we, one thing that we were, we asked to be looked into was, is it legal to happen? And if it is legal, how is it going to affect every department that has an administrative fee or whatever? So that's something that we, we've definitely been looking at extensively. Every meeting that we, we had was, was this specific thing. And what was your takeaway? We, I mean, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't get all the answers that we asked, but. We didn't get all the answers that we asked, but, um, you know, we, we, if, if it's gonna help, we would like to, you know. See it be used in a smart way.
He, here, here's a, here's a comment. Because it seems, it, it seems like if we're willing to spend fifteen or twenty thousand dollars to do a rate study, we ought to be willing to revisit the budget. It seems like, it seems like that, the, the instinct of the town is to make extreme moves. So the water rate was jumped crazy high. The first instinct on the wastewater rate was to jump it crazy high, but until the roundtable got together and said, timeout. Let's do an incremental increase rather than a big jump, right? And even in this discussion here, uh, the recommendation to, you know, revisit the administrative fee. The assumption is we have to cut out something else. Well, maybe we don't. Maybe it's just incremental reductions. Not wholesale reductions, right? But it seems to me that it's, it's worth looking at, uh, given the situation that. That we find ourselves. And, and I, I recognize it represents work, but, you know, I guess. I guess I, I struggle to see how much, you know, is, is the work effort too much? Given a potential benefit to the, to the town.
Well, a quick question about the administrative fee, and maybe you can answer it, Megan. In our PIC agreement, we pay a pretty hefty administrative fee. Is that passed through into the water bill in the administrative fee? Or is that just calculated wholly into that?
That's calculated wholly into the, the water cost.
Okay, so how much would that impact this conversation if that were to be negotiated down or away? Minimally?
Minimally.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, uh, real quick, so you're talking about moving nine hundred thousand dollars, whether the administration costs, you know, the other funds, that's what you're talking about doing, covering it over there, right?
Right, if, if, if we were just to go wholesale, absolutely, that would be.
We'll, we'll get it covered out of another fund. Well, well, my, and it translates about thirty bucks, it's thirty five bucks a house on the whole, right?
Per month, yeah.
Well, well, we, we got this one point three million infusion here, and then we also have this six hundred fifty three K infusion. That's quite a bit of money. Where did that get absorbed? And that, that didn't cut, I mean, how did, what did we cut down?
So. We're, we're talking about this.
Sorry, not the transfer into.
The transfer, transfer in the law, the loan or whatever you wanna call it in from the general funds.
So in the water fund where we, we did bring in that one point three million dollar income. And then proposed potential six hundred.
What did it, the one point three, what did it knock out? What did it do?
It kept us in the black in twenty twenty two, and then you'd see us in the red again in twenty twenty three.
So I think the mayor's question is, is okay, we're transferring six hundred fifty three thousand from the general fund into water. What are we cutting in the general fund to come up with that six hundred thirty five K? I think that's the.
No, no, not, not necessarily, that's probably another question. No, the question is, what, what did it do? What is the before and after? Especially the one point three, you got, you got two million here.
It kept us in the black. Well, I look, if, if I, Crystal, what happens if I, I do have, if we're ready to go there, I do have spreadsheets at the ready.
Oh, listen.
I don't know.
Megan, Megan, this Anita, if you go back a slide to the, um, proposed rates that you had. Does this one include the one point three?
Does, it does.
Okay. Thank you for.
Well, I, I like, this is trustee Whitehouse. I, I know that we talked, we didn't have a pretty big water rate increase, but, uh. The backstory, we were part of that discussion is the water fund was hemorrhaging, I don't know, eight to nine thousand dollars a day. And in twenty one, two thousand twenty one, if we hadn't done anything, I think. Uh, it was gonna lose two million dollars over the course of the year. I mean. That's a lot of money. Nine thousand dollars a day is a huge amount of money.
I mean, you can see, we're, we're in the black by like one, one point four, and you know, we're about a million dollars in these scenarios. If we don't have that million dollars, we're no longer in the black next year. But the subsequent year, twenty twenty three, we don't have a one point three million dollar infusion, and we don't have a six hundred fifty three dollar infusion modeled here. And you see, we're, you know, and that's after rate increases. I mean, that's in twenty twenty three, so that's seen two years with the rate increases. But no other infusions of money, and we're looking at, you know, pushing towards a million dollars of, of, of dipping into reserves. It doesn't mean we're, you know, our fund balance goes below zero. We have a fund balance, but this means we're not covering our expenses for the year.
Yeah, right. And there's a second one point three coming, just not sure what we're putting in.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, can I just say, since I was the one that kept jumping up and down on the round table about the budget, because it's what I do.
Yeah.
Um. This kinda goes back to, like, I get what he's saying, but at the end of the day, before you can make a decision to not do the administrative fee. Need to look at what the money is being spent on, like, the budget itself needs to be efficient, and I. Um, made a really big deal about it on Facebook and then. Talked to a lot of people at the budget demands, but at the end of the day, we spend money on things that aren't needs. So if the financial advisor or finance, what is it, finance manager? If that person in that position is required to do continuing education, then yes, we should be covering that, right? But we don't need to be spending money at high-priced hotels. We don't need you to bring us fancy meals when we're having a round table. I mean, I know that's only twenty, fifty, a hundred bucks or whatever, but it's every single time, and those efficiencies. Have to play in. I mean, this, the less we operate, like. The government outside of this town, the better off we are. We can make decisions in an efficient amount of time with a good amount. Of information and as demonstrated by this round table, there are plenty of people here in the community that are willing. To sit down and ask a bunch of questions and come up with ideas. And there's nothing to say that you can't have a financial round table specifically for the budget issue and the administrative fees and where money could be saved. And I highly recommend it to just push it off to next year. It's gonna sound really terrible, that's lazy. It's just lazy. Utilize the twelve thousand almost people that live here. And really put it out there and find people that want to get involved, because there's a lot of people that wanna get involved. And some of the loudest voices that have this much information about different topics, if they had an opportunity to sit down and really learn. They could have a bigger influence on the entire town, understanding we have to work together, and more minds are more ideas, and until. The information is out there, easy to access, with anybody being able to get involved. You're never gonna have a town that stands behind every decision that's made. You're just not, I mean, finding a link. This is just a case in point, finding a link to watch the board of trustees meeting online. It's buried in an agenda that you have to download in order to get it. That isn't right. It should be on the front page. Of the town website. Get people involved, then they care, then they won't be hammering you left and right and sideways. That's my. Fund balance. Um, it looked like it was assumed that it was acceptable to dip below fund balance limits, and previously we had. Had statements in board of trustee meetings that that was grossly, um. Yeah, so I, and, and I, that was, that was how we approached it previously. I'm of all people. Happy to change my mind, but I know that those are there for a reason, and. I know that maybe we haven't gotten the revenue as expected, every step in the way of us, so if we're planning to go under it. Is that a liability that we need to consider for safety financially of our town?
Um, I have, I have written, it's a policy.
Okay.
And I mean, it's timely, the board can change their policy. Um, I mean, when I was asked about this a couple of weeks ago, I go. Your policy, you can change it, and I'm not that timely.
Yeah.
Um, what you, what you need to understand is long term. Uh, as long as you keep your rate covenant, as long as we're meeting the needs of the borrowing.
Okay.
That's the real guy. And if you ever go into the market, um, like with, I mean, the open market with Moody's or S and P, which. This size town probably wouldn't, that would be when it would be very, very, um, important to say, have you changed your policy or you're living with it? Because they, they only care that you're living with your policy. It's, it's amazing to me. Okay, they don't, they don't care as long as they're living to you, if that makes sense.
So then my follow-up question is, rather than intentionally dipping below our fund policy. Should we not then adopt a more reasonable policy so that we're not then having to explain while we're going to the lower?
And Moody's is standing for, and sorry, that, Moody's is standing for is now recommending, because of COVID. They are recommending, I was shocked when this happened to investors, they're saying, please change your policy to make it more flexible. Say from a hundred to a hundred and twenty bucks, so that we don't come in and then you, because you're not at a hundred and twenty five. So just please have your, get in there with a council, please have your council change your policy. And, and I will, and I went, oh, okay, and so it was really that easy, but they wanted the board, the council, the board. To, to intentionally change the policy, and they are now recommending to, to municipalities. That they change their policy to make it more flexible between, you know, they usually, they don't stand at a hundred, but yeah. A hundred to a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty five. A lot of towns have a hundred and twenty five.
We're at a hundred and ten, right?
Yes. And this is on, we have this on the February.
We don't wanna go down eighty five?
Regular meeting, what?
Eighty five?
You know what? We'll talk about it on February twenty second.
Just for a year until you get to, here's why, yeah, just for a year until you get to the twenty twenty three budget, and then you can go through all that and figure it, that's enough. That's the way to get to the administrative fee there. But that buy you the time, you know, I don't know. Is it worth, is, is there enough money?
And I mean, meeting policy is good, but I mean, the purpose behind the policy is also the concern, like. If there's obviously a reason why it's usually a hundred or usually a hundred and twenty five, so if we're intentionally going under that or planning to intentionally do that.
I would say that I, I, I played with the model a little bit, and the difference between a hun, like a hundred and a hundred and ten percent, it. You know, you're still, you're still dipping in to the, to the fund balance, um. But, but I, I, I mean, when I'm, we're dipping in, I, I've made sure it was never more than a couple, you know, three years in a row, and it was. You know, never more than twenty percent, typically trying to peak around fifteen, so like fifteen percent into it. And you can see that we come back out, assuming that all, you know, assuming, unfortunately, that, you know, two thousand and eight doesn't happen again.
Yeah, well, and this is not necessarily an apples to apples comparison, but I said on the. Kutter School District Budget and Budget meeting, I've been on there for like eight years, so I've seen that of funding for education. And there have been a couple of years where they have fund balances as well for different things. Where collectively with the superintendent and their executive cabinet have had to make the decision that. As they do it out, they do it three years in advance, as they kind of project it out, where they are dipping in below certain levels. Because the cost of what it would cost in educating those students. That was more important than that safety net, and there's still a safety net there, it's just not quite as wide. Yeah, and you just have to jump a little. Yeah, I just need to know that, I mean, if we're risking that safety net, what level of risk is acceptable? So, um, that's one of my questions, especially because honestly, we're running two campaigns side by side. We're saying we need to charge people more money, but we're also encouraging them to use less, so. We were relying on the revenue that we're expecting and also asking everybody to pay us less in revenue by using less, so. I mean, the more successful we are in conserving water, fantastic, the less money we're making, because we sell. Right, our, you know, to sewer, so I'm, I'm just. Goes back to that efficiency, you gotta find money somewhere else. Yeah, I, that, and, uh, if we're willing to take a risk on that safety net, and then we're also running a campaign to take money away from that safety net. I mean, I just, I wanna make sure we're being very careful. I mean, all the things we're doing, I believe, and I'm behind, I just. Wanna make sure we're not putting ourselves at risk.
The good news is that when people use less water, one of our largest expenses in the water fund is having to actually purchase that water from North Kutter. So, you know, if we can, by shock, somehow convince everyone in town to use fifty percent less water, which that never happened, that I know of in the state of anywhere. Um, that would chop our North Kutter, I mean, if we could cut that from two million dollars to a million dollars, it'd be like, hey, let's trace and rejoice, right? Because yes, we bring less money in, but we're also not having to shell out as much money to North Kutter to purchase that water that we're gonna treat, so it, it. Yes, it will hurt us in some sense, but it also is gonna buy us back some reduced cost as well, so I think it's, and it. Helps Bob sleep better at night, because his.
It's not quite, it's not a one to one.
I know it's not one to one, I know, I know it's not one to one.
But, but that is correct, and, and North Kutter savings does make a difference. And I did, and I will say, I did update that. Layers upon layers of conservatism a lot of times in, in this modeling, and I, I did sort of make the executive decision to. Reduce the overhead expense for tw, expected for twenty twenty two by a reasonable amount that would reflect the fact that I think our estimates for North Kutter cost next year. Were way too high.
Okay.
Um, so I brought that down by.
Based on the forecast share price.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's hard.
That I know, or, I mean, that we know now, because collectively been way more evolved over there. Um, when you have your ear to the, you know, you have your finger on the pulse, you can make a better estimate about, excuse me, about what those.
Did you do that in his rate?
I did, yeah, yeah, the water rates it, I assumed like a half a million dollar savings.
All right, you did.
So.
Well, at the end of the day, water's not a renewable resource. And we have a limited supply, so conservation, no matter what, should always be the forefront of our minds.
Yeah.
It, it is, it is a, a, a tough conversation with the finance department, right, though, because it, it does have a direct impact on revenue.
And that grant that we just got is based on the conservation, right?
Yes, yeah, that's to help us develop a more, a more robust, um, conservation programming outreach.
This may be a really ridiculous and kind of a little bit of a left field question, but. One of the conversations that I hear all the time is like people talking about their summer water rates, right, watering their lawn and all that kind of stuff, and. I happen to live in a neighborhood where our HOA owns our non-potable or non-coattable, I already said that, water. How difficult would it be to get other neighborhoods on a non-coattable system? So that they're not using fresh water? Is that like a super expensive?
Most of the, the HOAs that have non-pots here in town, almost all at wells, ag well, agricultural wells on their property. And those just got transferred into the non-pot systems that they have. There are other subdivisions that did not have aquifers on their property. And, um, they, they would then have to go buy the water for that, so. You'd really be talking about expanding something, something analogous to the drinking water utility. Into a non-pot, what they call a purple pipe system, and, and we've thought about that many times. Especially as a use for our, uh, North Kutter shares that we own. Um, it is kind of a long-term goal of ours to, uh, flesh that out. And you basically talking about all of the set of pipes, pumps, the infrastructure, so it's quite, quite expensive, so we need to think about that.
So is it not a possibility that say, like, I don't know who has it or whatever, but so. For example, I live in Wellington Downs, so if Park Metals didn't have it.
They don't.
They don't.
Tracked yet.
Oh, okay, so how difficult or would it be to taxing for them to then be on the same system? As our neighborhood, we were literally next to each other.
The cost their ag, ag wells were limited to the property that they're on, and that's the way state law works. You can't go outside of that property, you can, but it's nearly impossible to get that, get that approved.
That, like, way over what I. Just thinking from, in the terms of having to buy water shares, which is a huge cost, if you don't have to do that. I mean, we pay our water, and we pay for the maintenance of our entire system, right? So if every neighborhood could have that tighter.
There are other communities greatly has a very robust, uh, non-pot or publicly owned non-pot system. And they have non-pot lines all over town.
Windsor does too.
Yeah.
We also have a, a really nice position on the river.
So it's definitely something that we tend to look at, uh, but there's, there's some challenges that we have that those other communities may not have had when they set theirs up. The price of.
But from a long term, though, that's something to.
Yes.
Yeah, it definitely is in our conversation.
Then any new developments that have.
They're non.
Yes, let's see, the other thing we're doing is discouraging developments that don't have a well on their site. And in current, encouraging those that do, so. None of the building permits we. None of the building permits we have um, kind of mapped out for the next three years. They're all in um, uh, non-pot supply except for a few.
You'll see that in planning commission, every single time a project comes to the planning commission, that is one of the top first things that's declared.
Where the water.
Part of it.
There's the water.
In that non-pot.
Evolved even into our landscaping requirements, even trying to change the public perception and mentality that we have to have these lush Malargo golf course yards. You know, why can't we be more natural C U than zero scape friendly? And then, you know, reinforcing to our homeowners associations that moving along in that direction, there's ways to do that without impacting property values. So that that's, I would say ninety nine percent a misconception about zero escaping and using more natural landscaping techniques. It comes down to how you apply it more so.
Yeah. I mean, my front yard cane line is big, so. And my side yard, because I have a corner lot, so I just have to do the backyard.
But as a requirement, your HOA standards for landscaping.
Right.
So that's kind of where that long term view for landscaping plans goes too.
Yes, I can't do a whole lot.
Yeah, it could be different. Or imagine being in Park Meadows where I was living, where that was a requirement and still using potable water to irrigate all of that. So that's.
The non, yeah, the non-coattable is the only saving grace and all that, I pay three hundred and fifty dollars a year. And I have it for five, six, seven months, whatever it is.
Go ahead, sorry. I was just gonna make some requests for follow up. And kind of some things that I noted that I would hope to see on models.
You might be able to see when she pulls the model up.
I know Davis Model Two factor maybe possibly.
I just want to kind of summarize some of the things I heard that I would like to see for when this word come across, so we were making decisions.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Side shatter.
Um, we already talked about fund balance stuff, I know that's up to me. But the other things that I had here um, was adding a stack bar on fund balance, including sinking fund. Um, and then I'd also like to see, of course, all the models that includes the rescue dollars, tranch two. For these similar visuals, that feel, those are my two things.
Okay. Please, I'm sorry.
The sinking fun stacked bar on these.
On these.
And then um, the scenario for with the ARPA tranch two.
This one.
Yeah.
Yes, for that one.
Yes, please.
Yep.
That's what I would like to see.
Thank you for bringing it back.
Sure.
Did you have additional slides in your presentation that you wanted to keep going through?
No, actually, this week, I did kind of, this, this was.
The, the end.
Um, I do have the ability to pull up some, you know, of course, I come with a few things in my back pocket. Trying to anticipate the direction of the conversation. Um, I do just want to make sure that we have the ability to answer your questions and are able to get from you some direction about what you would need to consider making a decision in one of these directions that were proposed. Um, we are.
Okay.
I think the current consideration is to try and come back to you next week, depending on the direction that we receive from you tonight. Um, which would, you know.
Sure, so, so the hope is to get some direction tonight. We would like, I mean, in a perfect world, we bring it back to you next week for a presentation with public comment. And then the following week, February eighth, you would, we would be bringing those rates back or the following meeting, not following, but the following meeting. Bring those rates back for adoption through resolution. Um, and for some reason, we hit February eighth and you, you're, we can't get a vote on it. We have one more meeting in February where those would, could be adopted. But that would be the very last opportunity we would have in order to meet the S S R F loan deadlines and everything else that goes along with it. So this, our goal was to try to get this ahead of you, let you have this round table discussion. Tell us what you need or what you want from us for that next, as far as rates, if you have an idea of what you might be comfortable with. Um, if there's more research we need to do, tell us what the, you know, I've heard from trustee Gator and and some of you about the indirect costs. We can certainly look into that. I don't think we can pull all of that information together in another, even a couple of weeks. It's going to take looking at our projects, um, what what we can sacrifice, you know, literally. Um, where we're willing to give up, where we believe the citizens would give up in service. Um, there, there's a lot, there's a lot of money at play right now. As far as the transfer from the general fund to sewers, three hundred and ninety thousand, that I've already promised, six hundred and fifty three thousand from general fund to water. So we're talking already almost a million dollars that we're having to find cuts, which we're working through. And we have that on an agenda in February for y'all to talk about. Um, so.
What, what, a budget amendment for that?
Not just, no, for you to talk about the the transfers to, from, from the general fund. And so we can let you know what, what, what we're looking at cutting, what, what our, what our ideas are.
Go ahead. So, I'm sorry to. I know, how far out do you have to show rates for the S R F loan approval? Do they have to go through the duration of the debt?
Yeah.
They do, okay.
Yeah.
No, we can change those as we go, it doesn't have to stay that exact number.
No.
Okay, okay, that was part two. We're promising this, it'll be the rate for the next twenty years.
Which is why we encouraged every year doing a, doing a recommendation. Yeah.
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 Yep. So September fifteenth is the date we're scheduled to come back and talk to you guys about the general fund um, transfers. That's a work session, yeah.
Okay. So if I could ask, can we actually take some time to sit and look at the the proposed water rates? And kind of have some discussion about what people think one way or the other, and then maybe do the same for sewer? Um, and actually kind of throw things back and forth. I appreciate you guys actually put up the one I'd asked for already, so it's great that we don't have to ask you, you guys prepped it before today, so that's great.
And Dave just have the model ready to play with if you all want to see some of those scenarios and talk about that.
Is this rates for all users or is this rates for?
Sewer.
Are we separating out commercial, residential, all these kind of things in this scenario?
So, the expecta- my working expectation was that the, any increase that we would see in the residential rates would then be reflected at that base rate level or not, base rate we've already adopted. Um, so those rates, commercial rates was part of it would stay the same, but that, that whatever tier rate increase is applied to the tier rates. That would be reflective for the commercial water rates as well. But that was really clear.
Try and do it again.
I stuttered on myself many three times. So, um, right now, the commercial rate is based on, we in- increased the base rates. And then we increased the usage rate, it has a single tier. And we increased that to be the same four fifty six. We would increase that same four fifty six to whatever that tier one rate increases to residential. It would also increase for commercial.
So like a percentage increase? So if we increase the tier one residential fifteen percent, it'll be a same percentage increase on commercial base rate?
No, so the base rate won't change, it's just the tier. So basically, right now, the way it sits at sixty six dollars, the businesses might have a different base rate, but they're, they only have one tier. And that one tier is the four fifty six. So when we make the change, let's just say we make change to one A, then the business's base rate would stay whatever it is now. But their one tier would go to the seven dollars.
Oh, so the tier would have.
The tier would be. But if you were to do two B, their base rate would be unchanged and their new base, their new usage rate would now be at the five twenty four.
Exactly, yeah. So that would. Your changes.
Just a tier. And whereas residents have three different tiers, it would just be the the one change for businesses and it would be the, whatever the lowest one is for residential.
Do we still have our online palace?
Online palace?
Um, just because, yeah, I need to have a drop off, but um, I guess Stephen was trying to say something and couldn't, so, but I don't see him anymore.
I think he, he, his question was, what is the purpose of this meeting? And what's the outcome supposed to be? I thought he's holding up a note.
We're, we've circled back around.
Thank you.
Um, could we notate that on these visuals for how residential versus commercial? To make sure that the assumption of the, the tier. I don't, I don't know how to do that exactly, but I would want to make it clear, so if somebody was just reviewing.
Sure.
This, they would understand that.
Okay, yeah.
Good luck. I don't know.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah. So am I assuming that commercial users, is their base rate at or more than residential? Users?
Yeah, see, lowest is same as residential, highest is significantly higher.
So when we're looking at the sewer rate increase, the base rate increase for residents and businesses, yes?
That was my next question.
And is that increase, instead of it being an equal dollar amount, should it not be an equal percentage increase? Like, I'm not a water expert, but I've owned a business and I know that my internet costs more in my restaurant than it does in my house. And I know that my water costs more in my restaurant than it did in my house, just the base rate. So, I would assume that if my residence is increased, my cost is increased by twenty five percent. Then my business would be increased by twenty five percent, which we went round and round to make sure that as a round table we were recommending an equity like that in increase rather than an equal increase. Because a ten dollar increase to my household budget hurts a lot more than a ten dollar increase to my business budget.
Yeah, which is why we, we fought for the equitable language in there, because we want to make sure that uh, commercials look that differently than a resident.
I think the board had that same frustration and that was one of the, the beginning, like the beginning seeds of the comprehensive. Thought like the all encompassing study too, because they, they were approached differently and they weren't approached equitably.
Right.
And that was, that was really frustrating, that's like we, let's go out and punch the citizens and let's punch the commercial people and not do it the same. Let's use boxing gloves with one and a, you know.
Right.
Metal mallet with the other.
And, and not that I try not to punish businesses, I just think that we all need to carry our own weight, right? And so you don't make your five year old carrying the forty pound box of potatoes, right, like.
And the challenge has been is how do we get all of this information and all of this data to make the right decision one time, the first time? So we're not coming back and having to keep, you know, battling through this over and over. How are we approaching both sides of the conversation and increasing the rates so that everybody wins? When nobody wins at all.
Yeah, or, and on the plus side of that, how do we not become the least friendliest business town as well? You know, so it has to be, that's where I'm like, you got to get the best practices and understand how it works in the places. Because if we do what we think is equitable, but it looks worse than every other northern Colorado town and businesses say, oh, I'm sorry, I can't continue doing business in Wellington because of your water rates, I don't know, you know.
People already feel that way about buying houses here, right?
So.
There's a lot more when businesses decide to not move here than it does when one of the residents decide to not move here.
I get that, but I, so if I'm being frank and honest, I don't see a lot of push from the town of Wellington to build the commercial side of this town.
We can't yet.
Come to a planning commission.
Well, the, the decisions we're making right now today about the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant are truly and honestly those foundations to cultivating economic development and commercial growth. Because if we can't treat the water or catch the poop, nobody's going to want to bring their business to town.
No, I agree wholeheartedly.
So.
As someone who tried to open a business here, when I was moving up here, I was not met by anyone in any way, shape or form that would allow it to be welcome to a small business owner. It's welcome to the big chain people that, as far as I can tell, in talking to my neighbors and my community, people don't want that. They want us to embrace these people, the smaller business owners of the people who live here. And from my perspective only, that is a very difficult task.
And the other challenge that we're faced with is displacement. For the residents that have lived here for a long time that are on fixed income, when this community is no longer affordable for the demographic that it was built on, I mean, that's a, a strong reason to take pause and really evaluate, you know. Is this the best decision for our community? You know, is it better for us to try and supplement it through general fund transfers every year? Or do we want to try and stretch ourselves to, you know, push the penny out of every resident and every commercial business to flip the bill? It's, it's a difficult balance to try and find. And so having this round table and work session with the board trustees and representatives of the community equally, even though we're elected to be representatives of the community. It's important and it's been super helpful. And I guess I want to go back to what trustee Gator was alluding to, you know, are we trying to um, get this narrowed down to one or two options to bring back to the board? Are we going to bring all five of those options back to the board? I mean, what are, what are we trying to accomplish in the last, hopefully thirty minutes of this meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I agree wholeheartedly, I'm just, as a community member who doesn't have anything to gain or lose in this situation. I'm just trying to communicate to you all of the different conversations that I had that prompted me to want to get involved in so many different ways. And as someone who's lived here in Colorado my entire life, while it's not a small town, Wellington, I can one hundred percent relate to the idea that the state that I grew up in, that my mom grew up in, that my grandmother grew up in, has become mostly unaffordable for my family. You know, and we fight to just stay right where we are. And I want, I'm fighting for the people that are on fixed income by asking you to relook at the budget. And asking you to really relook at wants versus needs, you know, and I'm not picking on the front end loaders anymore because, you know, God made me feel bad.
Really need that loader.
I know, I know. Seriously, like, that is why I got involved. And sometimes I think, I find, I know with the school district and I think I find in any setting like this, when you're an elected official, you kind of have to pick your words and be careful what you have to say. And I don't have that restraint on me, so I'm going to say exactly what I think. And this is exactly how I was in the round table, so.
Just want to put that in quotes.
And to be honest, if I was, I would still say exactly what I think because it's just who I am. But I just think that there, we need to fight on both sides of it. And I get that you need to make a decision on this and I hope you'll really take into consideration the many, many hours and tears on my part. And a lot of arguing on all of our cards to get to what we recommended. But just having a recommendation and approving that, I hope that you'll still continue to try to find ways to reduce that the budget for that fund and find ways to save money and to put money back in people's pockets.
I, I think that goes without saying, that's going to be done from here on out.
Yeah.
All right, you gotta, you gotta do that and then you gotta go find more money. Because there's not enough money there either, we still need more money, that's what we do. When these infrastructure bills come down from the federal government, it's going to be incumbent on new boards, new mayor to get out there and find it from here on out. For the rest of the duration, the next twenty years, okay, that's what it's going to take and then, and going through the budget now. But our problem is we got two weeks, right? Before we gotta do something or three weeks?
Well, yeah.
That's a problem.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's the dilemma. So how do we, what do we, what do you want to do?
So, I suggest that we maybe try to figure out from what we're seeing here, is there any rates that we love, rates that we hate? Um, and then would we like to see any tweaks on that? So that to say, hey, staff, could you please bring back to us if we were to do rate number two B? But if we put in the assumption that we were also able to do X, Y, and Z, what would that look like? Can you hold the graphs back up, Neil? Those might be, I don't know if those are more helpful.
Um.
This.
I don't, yeah, I don't really have comparable thoughts for the water rates.
I'm, I'm, temperature check for me, new rest tier structure is a big win that matches our water conservation goals.
Alright, so what are the options?
Two. Two, so that's, that's where I'm at for option for that consideration for the general fund transfer. I am all in for um, the ARPA, oh, we're not talking about our friends.
No, that's just with the general fund transfer.
Yeah, so the.
ARPA is already assumed because we already approved, we already approved the ARPA funding to go to water, so that's already included for all of these.
Okay, but we're not talking about ARPA two, we're only talking about that. Is that what, is that what was?
ARPA two is being discussed with sewer possibly, but it's not anywhere, we could ask, we could ask staff to bring us back an option where ARPA two goes to water.
That's what I was going to bring up, so I'm curious if we could see a scenario with. I mean, it's either here or sewer, right?
Yeah.
So, so I don't know, I don't want to bring that away, if that's something we're going to consider for sewer. But so that we know, I would, in what we're seeing, I'm assuming that ARPA two would go towards water.
We can do both, so we can bring that back.
Okay.
So this here from Bob, we can use ARPA two for both water and sewer, right?
We can model it.
We could have, we could have.
At the end of the day, does it matter?
No.
No.
It makes more of an impact on your sewer rates.
Okay.
Makes, that's.
Yeah.
It makes more of an immediate impact on your sewer rates.
Okay, which is why we put it there.
Which is why we put it there. However, you know, the uncomfortable conversation, love uncomfortable conversation. Is that we're gonna have a, we're expecting to have a shortfall. In what the water treatment plant ninety percent cost is gonna come back at versus what we currently have for our loan. So a million dollars would go a long way towards, I mean, on that gap too. So it it would be highly valued.
And that's one of my questions on wastewater. You budgeted, or you s- assumed forty-eight.
I did.
What if it comes in at sixty?
We will be in a very different conversation.
Well, I mean, from the sixty percent of the ninety percent was a fifty percent increase.
Yeah, that was kinda ridiculous.
Twenty-five percent increase, right?
They went from thirty.
Yeah.
Eight to forty-nine.
So the sixty percent estimate for wastewater, you're right, it was uh thirty-nine, thirty-nine seven, I believe. And then went up, the first one that came in was at forty-nine.
Right, and those are the apple apples. You guys, you engineers, some out of there to get it down to forty-seven.
Yes.
And you went in with the loan amount at forty-eight?
For the application, I put in fifty million. Um, and we could, we could bring that down when we actually close the loan in March. Right now, uh, Megan's analysis and mine are assuming a forty-eight million dollar term.
Right.
And and of course, we would not take out more loan than we need. That was a very direct recommendation, obviously, from their roundtable as well. So we, we have even closer valuation of that before we have to, before that March fourth approval date in front of the authority board. And anything lower will then, we will capture in a reduced need for increase the next time, next year.
So we have the capability of pulling fifty?
We do.
Our, our goal is to get the GMP for the wastewater plant to the board on February eight for approval.
Okay.
By that time, you know, it'll be before March, so we will tell the power authority, you know, exactly what dollar amount we'll be shooting for. For the wastewater loan, whether it's forty-six, five, or forty-seven, whatever that number has to be.
A lot of those nights. Delivery dates matched to the schedule.
Okay.
So it'll, a little bit more confident with the quality of the GMP that.
I'm just getting hammered at work with all the pricing increases.
I was getting ready to ask trustee Condeson if you had some insider information.
And none of their contracts are holding, so.
Everything's up, nobody guaranteeing it.
That's, I think that's one of the reasons why we get hit so bad with this G and P is we were expecting them to hard bid and hold. And uh, we still need to kinda go through some of that. That's part of what we're looking at right now, just to feel comfortable with that hold. And is it matching up with the construction schedule? So at sixty percent, that wasn't really a requirement, they were using their judgment, but at this point. And I think that that explains a lot of this big jump from sixty-nine. And we've kind of expected similar jump, maybe this and fully expect a jump on the water side. We'll know soon.
And that, that number does still include that contingency.
One of the things we're thinking is that maybe the ARPA money makes more sense on the water side. Because that would give us a little bit of buffer, right? To absorb some of this craziness that's going on right now.
So shall we run that model too then, just to see?
And we'd already talked about that internal.
Well, the challenge is we're not really gonna know what that increase is on the water plant before we're making a decision beginning of February, correct? So we won't really know whether we need to, now, obviously, we're not deciding where the ARPA goes. Well, we already did the. So I'll question, cause if we're gonna build into the sewer rates using the ARPA funds. This board probably needs to make the decision to put those funds towards sewer, because otherwise we're in essence obligating the future board. To something that, so we probably do need to assign those ARPA funds to sewer if we're gonna build a sewer race based on that. So I think we do need to see both sides.
Yeah, we should see it.
I see both.
And you probably wanna see fifty for the loan amount and not forty-eight.
It could always come down.
Okay.
And we don't wanna be in the situation that with the water treatment loan that we pulled the trigger at, was it twenty-four, five or twenty-five, five? And we're, we have a funding short gap there, cause we can't go up, but I think we could go down in the process. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Sounds correct.
So the, yeah, the water's just a different story and loans already closed, it is what it is.
Yeah.
So it sounds like, so we need to see for the water, we need to see an option. I guess, I guess a good question would be, is anyone thinking we should look at rates other than the proposed two A and two B? Is anyone feeling that we should really highly consider the one A or one B, whether board or roundtable people for water? Or should we just focus our attention on the two A and two B and then adding in ARPA funds and things like that?
Everything I've heard from here and elsewhere says that if I had more control over my water bill. I'd be happier and I'd be more encouraged to use less water if it costs more, the more I used it. So, and that matches our other goals of other things that we're doing. And it provides, as you can see on here, the lowest possible option price for everyone. And puts it into their hands and their control. Um, in the summer though, when you look at these rates for people who are complaining about three hundred, four hundred dollar bills. That is irrigation costs that they were doing. It was irrigation, irrigation. And they are gonna get some big bills if they don't make some big changes. So I'm not saying this is great and everybody, it's the best option for everyone. Cause there's gonna be in the summer, some people who have some outrageous bills. But the point is, and if with our education, that's why it has to go hand in hand. It says that the way we're changing it is to encourage you to monitor your water usage and that you can control your bill to be smaller. We're giving you this ability through changing it to more tier, tier heavy. So I, you know, I wanna go for this, but then I, I, I can, I can foresee the future.
Well, and people that have the HOAs that will find them, if they're not taking care of their yard, that becomes a catch twenty-two for them.
Right.
Which is more expensive to find or the water bill, right?
Which is also our.
There's also, I believe, statute that says if there's a water, water restrictions placed by the town. Those preempt uh, the HOA's enforcement rules, if the town is in, has created a watering restriction. There is statute out there.
The bigger thing is you don't need that much water to keep your grass green.
No, you follow, follow the recommended.
Yeah.
It stays green, that's what I did, it works. It does work.
You know, and and then we're offering free services and coaching on how to water your yard better effectively, right? I mean, like you said, we can't, we're not gonna be able to make sure everybody has low bills, but we're giving them the power to control it themselves. And in my mind, I, who, I'm, want to save money at my house. So I will, I've never reached over tier one before in my house ever, so me, and I have a great yard, so.
I go for all the time, but I have eight people in the house. So as much as I don't like that, cause I'm gonna be paying, I think, but honestly, I feel that's how it should be, right? If I have eight people in my house and I'm using more water, then, you know, you've got you and your daughters, I should be paying more than you, cause I'm a bigger strain on the system. So I, I personally do like those as well.
I just wanted to point out that our roundtable was just sewer, we didn't.
Right, I understand, I understand.
I do recommend that there should be probably assistance commission on the water eventually, because they're two separate entities, but.
And it's such a big difference seasonally. But it also, that's exactly the big difference that is such a risk to our whole community, right? So if we're trying to eliminate or minimize the risk to capacity during peak times. And we want people to conserve water, and we want everyone to be able to get water because of those capacity concerns or issues of those peak times. That's, that's the plan that says you pay for what you want, so.
Have we ever looked at during budget billing? For that, if people knew, you know, that their water goes like this seasonally. Budget billing, one, as a fund, you would know better what your revenue is month to month, right? And as a resident, if you know that your summer months are significantly higher or really need to get that energy efficient washing machine or whatever, right?
Yeah.
You, you know what your bill is every month, you can count on it and then you don't freak out every time it comes and you have to open it up to see what the amount is. I think so, I do with my gas bill because I get credit starting this summer and my winter goes high.
I think that goes along with our, our fan conversation too, and so came back on some of that. But we wanna focus on water rates and we'll, we'll check into that budget billing. I don't know if our current software will do that, but we will check and let everybody know. So, so we're looking at three, three primary topics, right? Looking at um, the two A and two B options, adding the ARPA into the consideration for comparison.
Yeah, like a two C, and then I'd like to also request.
And then change the fund balance policy as well.
Change the fund balance, but that really is not gonna affect this, I don't think. That'll just affect, that's not gonna tell us, we're gonna set higher or lower tiers. It's just gonna mean, if we change the fund balance, we'll, instead of being below policy, we'll be at policy.
What you do when you run out of money.
Right, right. But what I would like to do is, I understand like the, the, getting rid of the, as much I would love to just get rid of all of the administrative costs right now. Could we do a rough estimate of what would that look like, let's say we took twenty percent of those?
I think, I think Patty says she already has a plan on, they're looking.
Well, separate, so she's looking at how does she come up with the six hundred and fifty-three thousand that we're transferring from general fund into each of those? So she's already looking at that. What I'm saying is let's look at, if we were to try and say, let's take twenty percent on top of that. Because it would be an additional twenty percent to that of the nine hundred thousand, so nine hundred thousand, that would be roughly two hundred thousand dollars, somewhere in that range. Um, what would that mean and what realistically what we would have to, to cut? Now, I think to do a full, to figure this out, I think that's gonna take us more time than two weeks. But could we also get an option that says, if we were to additionally cut some of the administrative costs, what would that impact on rates be? And on top of that, what are some likely programs that we would have to cut? Would that mean we're not doing fireworks at Fourth of July? And let's, let's show people, this is gonna hurt if we do this. But at least give us that information. So we as trustees can look at that and say, that's gonna hurt too much for what it would save us, we're not gonna go there. Or maybe we say, yeah, it's gonna hurt a lot, but I think we should go there. So I'd like to see at least a rough estimate. I understand it's gonna take us time to do this full on, but could we get like a twenty percent? If we were to take twenty percent of that cost and cover it, what would that mean? We are gonna have, what are some likely things we would have to cut to make that happen? And then we as trustees can look at that and we can say, we like it, we hate it, and also tell the community. You guys have been asking us, please get rid of this. Well, here's what that would mean. We are gonna have to, you're not gonna have fireworks on Fourth of July.
Are you saying we're gonna tell that to the community or are we gonna ask the community?
Or ask, well, let's present, let's have staff present us with options so the community's hearing these. Cause I think that in a sense, not we're telling the community, we are going to take these things away, but we are. Cause we as the board and staff working together have to decide if we're gonna cut out two hundred thousand dollars extra on top of what Patty's already looking at. We gotta cut something. You could allude to that and tell them without telling them, here are some of our biggest budget items. That could potentially be cut, not saying we're going to do it, but here are some examples. So the reason I would like to, if we can, again, I, good either way, I would prefer to give more specific examples. So that people understand what it's gonna cost to do that. Cause if we just say, would you like us to cut, you know, twenty? Of course, they're all gonna say, yes, I pay a lower bill and you give stuff up. Of course, they're gonna, but if we tell them, well, that means you might not get a fireworks show. There might not be a Fourth of July parade. All this, people who have already said.
They are, they are gonna have to give something up. I mean, that's, that's, again, anyone who says you can do more with less is fooling themselves. There's also a, a point here that with an enterprise fund, they're only ten percent of a, a grant. There's only ten percent by, by the law, and this is all tied in with Tabor as well, which is. So there's a maximum you can divert from the general fund into either one of these defined based on the uh. The fund balance of water or sewer. So there are some things that are controlling how much you could transfer in as well.
The key that, what I'm not, I'm not asking for us to transfer additional money in, is I'm saying, cause I agree with trustee Whitehouse, you're completely right. That's the six hundred and thirty-five, whatever that Patty's already trying to figure out is that ten percent. What I'm saying is on top of that, if we reduce the transfer for administrative costs, the general fund is basically saying. We're going to bill the water fund for eighty percent of what we, what we need. So it's not, we're not taking additional money out of the water fund, we're just charging it less.
Leaving it there.
We're leaving it in the water fund, but then that means the general fund has to be cut to make up for that. And that's where I think we need to be able to give some concrete things of, here's what we're gonna have, here are some things we might have to cut away from things that you as a citizen want. You know, it might be, hey, there's less trips on your side streets when we have snows. I mean, it could be, there's a lot of different areas where we can say, be, but we need to give people, here's what it might cost you.
Well, maybe you have to do your budget efficiency analysis first to find the savings within the expenditures of the town. That aren't directly related to citizens, before you try to tell the citizens that you're gonna take away their fireworks, which is more hurtful to the town than helpful. Because of the revenue that comes in for the eleven, twelve, fifty thousand people or whatever they're covering.
Well, I, I know, I know, but yeah, so I agree with you. I, I think, I, I agree with you and I'm not saying that what we tell them, this is what it's guaranteed to be, cause I agree, we need to.
Yeah, that's why the thirty-four dollars, that's kinda dangerous, I think.
Well.
Don't say, I'm gonna cut your thirty-four dollars with that.
I, I am saying that if we were to do that, and I understand we can't just snap, but it's gonna take us longer than two weeks to do that efficiency and really figure out where.
It's gonna take months to figure that out. I mean, I think if we could circle back, I mean, I think this is a broader uh, budget discussion. Um, but maybe circle back to the topic at hand. I mean, I know these influence each other, but. How much we think, we're thinking about potentially cutting and where will we cut it from? I think that's pretty specific at this point. I think it's certainly worth looking at. But I don't think we're gonna find any answers tonight.
And then on that flip side of that, maybe concentrating on more, we, how we could get more sales tax that would fund. And then provide that extra more from the ten percent that we'd be able to do. That's just as important too, but these are huge topics. So I, I think the efficiency, looking through the budget completely and doing that very thorough review, which kind of matches what the other practice that we're gonna be doing. The first step there, but I'm saying that I don't think we can commit to twenty percent or anything without knowing. So we have to know what we can do before we can commit to it in a model that would then determine the rates that people pay. So I, I agree with the concept. I think that is the right thing to do. But I, I can't say that in a week or two weeks, I could vote on rates dependent on something we don't know and say that that is a responsible thing I can do.
Well, and that's why I'm not saying that should be the only rate. I'd like to see that as an option and it might be that I'm the only on the board that says that's a good idea. And we, and we vote on doing two A, two B or whatever, right? Or two C, if that's the, the better one. Um, but I, I would like to see that, because I think that's something that should be considered. And again, the consideration might be exactly, as you said, trustee Kenny, I've considered and I don't think it's a good idea. That's totally fine, right? That, that's why you were elected, was to be able to make those decisions.
I think everybody here would say it's a good idea.
Why not? But you might say that we don't have enough information, so it's still not a good idea right now. So I think we should still look at it.
Well, maybe it is January eighteenth and we have a lot of time and a lot of things that could impact our budget. Especially in the first quarter of twenty twenty-two. So for tonight, we need to decide, are we bringing back two A, two B and two C with what additional?
ARPA two.
And ARPA two, right? And the. Yeah. Potential changes to the fund balance policy, because it does and it doesn't impact the rates, right? Is that where we're all at?
That's what I think.
Okay.
Staff handle.
Yes, well said.
Well, I think, and I do think the fund balance is just as important.
Absolutely.
I don't wanna vote on something that intentionally puts us below a policy that we're not also adjusting.
Well, the fund balance policy impacts how we're able to get future lending as well. So, I mean, they all play into each other. So I think that it is completely relevant to have those conversations at the same time, right? I agree, trustee Kenny.
Yeah. So are, are, I think for the fund balance policy, suggestion that we consider down to a hundred percent of debt service?
At least.
We'll assume our recommendations likely not to go below that.
No!
You are definitely not watering.
I'll just also remember that the uh, SRF loan for the uh, water treatment plant. We have a triple A bond rating, which is supported by our investment funds, our fund balance. All this stuff is, that's why we have the highest bond rating and the lowest rate. So we gotta, certainly, and I, I'm sure our finance department is well aware that. And part of the terms of our, our loan, my understanding is, we have to maintain that triple A rating. That sort of level of risk mitigation by having sound policies. So I think certainly look at it, just be careful that there might be unintended consequences down the line.
That's a fair, that's a fair response. I think that, um, since it's a state, we're going to get an aggregate, but I think it's a fair question. We need to make sure we look at.
So me, that sounds like the kind of grants and loans minimum, right? We've already explored that.
The grants and loans minimum, like, like, yeah, you mentioned for the fund balances, they look at all of our assets and everything. So like, that isn't, yeah, we're, we're we've got that covered, we've got, yeah, we've got that covered in our sleep. The, our internal fund balance is what drives, drives this.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know. I keep a reserve of my house.
So then my follow-up question, it sounds like we have our our next steps for our next trustee meeting. However, what are the next steps for our roundtable members? When is their next meeting and what kind of, you know, follow-up will they have or, because they have clearly expressed that they'd like to see this through or have an ongoing uh, influence or participation or updated on this. So what does that, that look like?
So have, a quick question as we're kind of finalizing here, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. So what I'm hearing right now is we're considering two and two B, two C. What I've asked for to consideration, to see is something that has a consideration of reducing the administrative fee, what I'm hearing from the board is you're not willing to see that right now in consideration of rates. Is that a correct understanding?
I think that's a much more in-depth conversation.
I understand. So what I'm understanding is from the board, you're saying we're not willing to consider that for discussion at the next two meetings. Is that a correct understanding?
I don't know, man. I, I feel like I'm stepping in a hole there with that question.
Well, I'm trying to know.
I'm trying to consider six hundred and fifty thousand.
Realistic and reasonable for us to come to a conclusive decision on the administrative fees in two weeks. We don't have enough information or data to make a good decision on that. So asking us to make a reasonable or realistic decision on that is, I don't think it's plausible at this moment. Is, do I think it's important to bring it back and find the efficiencies? Absolutely.
Yeah.
But I think we also need to look and see what's going to happen. Are we going to get a significant snowstorm? Are we not going to get any snow? Because if we don't get any snow or any water, any moisture, we don't have anything coming down the irrigation line. This is a whole different conversation to have. So it, I think it's okay to take just a little pause here before we start diving super deep into that and see what the rest of twenty twenty-two is going to look like.
I agree with the direction. We should look at reducing administrative costs. Absolutely. But I don't think we'll have enough information on that to show it as a viable option that I can, I can vote on. Let's say that I don't want to do that. And the reason I wouldn't want to do this because I was like, because I didn't have enough on, I wasn't sure it would work. So that's my opinion.
I just want to make sure it's clear. So staff knows. So it sounds like we're not, staff, when the telling staff, don't bring us back anything on that for our next meeting. That's not something we're willing to consider.
Please go on, uh, trustee gear.
Next thing, that, that, that's the whole, because, because we're trying to fair right now is what McDonald's, trustee McDonald said is, telling staff, what are you bringing this back in next meeting? So we, I, I agree, we need to figure this out. And I think that at the next meeting or the meeting after, we as a board need to commit to, this is the date we are going to bring this back and we're going to be doing some things on that. If we're not willing to do it now, it needs to not be a nebulous at some point in the future. It's like, within X amount of time, we are going to have staff bring us back. What would we have to cut to be reduced by X number?
So you want to know what the plan looks like?
Correct. I don't want to leave it nebulous to like, look into it and then, you know, two years, because we did it last year with the, the commercial rates, right? We told them, bring us back commercial rates. A year later, we finally got the commercial rates. We didn't have a hard day.
And my question as one of the citizens, and this is something I, I just don't know, so if you guys can answer this, is are you able to say six months down the road, because I, I think it is nice to have a solid date, six months down the road, once you get that recommendation, are you allowed to review the rate again, if you know it's going to make a, an impact? If not, can you do, at least do it in a year? Like, we're, because we're talking about yearly.
So it gets tricky, especially with the election in April, because basically we would be committing a future board that is not this board to take an action.
Yeah.
Like if, if we were all, you know, we're not coming to an election in two months.
Yeah.
That would be a different story, right? Because it's all, seven of us would be here, but it likely might be a different seven, right? That are sitting here. Um, so us doing anything past the election is that, and I, I agree with trustee McDonald, we need, we need to not be changing rates all the time, right? There'd be, so if we're going to set a rate in this year, we shouldn't be really looking at changing that at least until next year. So we can't just be like, oh, it's great, let's change it again.
Wouldn't this be a good opportunity? You just ask like, what do we want the roundtable to? I mean, we did a lot in a really short period of time. I think most of us would be willing to sit down and maybe that's something that we help take on the staff once a month, we're looking at this so that you're getting a recommendation that's fully vetted by your staff, by your roundtable, that's knowledgeable about how the water and sewer works. And then either there's money there and efficiencies that are to be made or there aren't. But you already have a group of people who are committed to this issue. That would be a great utilization for that.
Yeah.
And then that gives you, I mean, I get what you're saying about not committing, but you're, if you've got something to look at six months from now, that's only a couple of months off from when you really wanted to be looking at the water and sewer rates anyway for twenty twenty-three, right? So, yeah. By the time you make a decision on two A, two B, two C, whatever, which is within the next few weeks, then you can put together what you want for an agenda and you can start roundtable meetings in March and the staff has plenty of time to gather that information with a specific task.
And I did ask that question because I, I remember the September deadline for budget stuff. So, yeah.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
In the last meeting, it was very clear, like the direction that we were thumbs up to like financial committee as a sort of.
Yeah, and I think that would be good to, maybe that financial committee would be the one that looks into those efficiencies. And it's the first thing we have them do.
Yeah. I mean, these are all things that we've already agreed to do and that's the intention. We've already, already looking for a bunch of budget and opportunities with other persons' projects. So I mean, I feel like all the things that you're asking for are things that we are already planning. So I, I mean, if you want to put on a date on it, put a date.
I think it's helpful to the citizens when we put dates on things. And I understand, we can't click, so we can't commit a future board, but we can say, hey, we are going to instruct staff that at this time next year to please bring this back before the next board. Um, I think that, because it tells our citizens, we're not just saying this and then not doing it, because sadly, I mean, I think this board has done a much better job of trying to follow through on things. But in government in general, we're, politicians are good at saying things and never doing them. I'd like for us, when we put a date on it, it tells people, hey, we're actually serious. We're not just being like other people and saying things. We intend for this to actually happen. I think it just helps. Again, we're trying to build that trust with the community. We want to work with you, not just for saying things that sound good. So I think if we can put a date, I think it'd be helpful, and not committing the future board to take action, but say, hey, we're going to instruct staff to please bring, you know, these things that we think are important to do. We're going to ask staff to look into these to bring them back to the next board to review with them. And then that board will have to make a decision as to whether they feel those things should be cut, kept, or whatever. I think that would be, why is it less to do that if we're not, yeah, if we're, what I've heard is we're not willing to do it right now because we don't have enough information, that's fine. But let's put in place, here is a plan for the next board to have the information necessary so that they can make a decision one way or the other on this.
So.
What, could I just make a comment? I would ask what staff's uh, you know, some of these things are, I mean, the budget process starts in May, June, uh, in the departments. I mean, they're, they're at it for most of the year. I would ask them what their capabilities are and what their timelines and schedules are, because I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that we've got major projects going on and there's only so many priorities an individual can handle. And like, oh, here's priorities twelve and thirteen. Something's going to give. I think I'd like to get the input back from the people who would be doing the work. What is a realistic, doable schedule, not one imposed by from this side, personal opinion?
So that's what I was going to offer is, if you can give us till next week, next, the next meeting to come, I can meet with staff, we can talk about what these options are, what you would like from us, how we best utilize what our thoughts are after working with the roundtable, how to best utilize them, um, thinking about how we want to start that finance committee. So put all these little pieces together and come up with a plan for you all at the next meeting with a potential timeframe that we would get it done.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
So would that be fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
So all four is bringing up the roundtable. So I
And then any, I know we all want to get home, but we also need to do what we just did for water for sewer. Because this is only half of the rates we need to consider. So we intend to do the same thing we just did on those sewer rates that were proposed.
Two B and two C.
Inquiry and the, yeah.
So, I mean, I guess we already have kind of, we have the option, so we can see with or without ARPA. Because again, if we use the ARPA in the water fund, we won't have the sewer fund. Um, so we can see both the steps and the non-step increases here. And then we can also see each of those with the ARPA funds in there or out of there.
Is there other? Any other information?
These all include the general fund transfer in them, correct? Okay.
Yeah. And they all include the tranche ones.
I think it was included in the base assumption she had on this slide before. She had said that the general fund was already included. And so for all of these, include that.
Can I make a comment about the general fund? I mean, I think what needs to be clear is that it's still, every dollar we spend comes from a taxpayer, either Wellington, the county, the state or the federal level, it's redistributed, redistributed. But the general fund monies are still tax monies, are still being paid for by, I, I'm guessing ostensibly mostly our town residents. So there is no free money. I mean, there's money in a different bucket. And again, I'm not against looking at this, but I think we ought to be honest that there is no printing presses, is, you know, with the, to cut this stuff, it, it's going to, it is still, we're still paying for it. They're just not paying for it on a monthly basis. That's all. I think we need to be clear about that, because it is, it's all taxpayer money.
Does that amount have to be returned to the general fund?
That, that's a one-time transfer.
So I'll kick this one off. I think I'd like to, I heard what the roundtable had to say about the stepped increases. So that reduces the options down to two and four. So and it's difficult to make a decision between two and four without seeing the impacts from what we decided about the first one. So my, my recommendation would, for, as a trustee or individual or however you want to put it, is I'd like to see two and four brought back for consideration. Um, but it's difficult to make a decision on those, of course, without that information on how the ARPA funds impact uh, our last conversation. Right? There's the step increase part, that was, that was like super eye-opening for me. That's not what I would have, that's not what I would have assumed all along. I, I'm a rip the Band-Aid approach kind of thing. So I found that information to be super helpful and that was one of my biggest takeaways.
No, I would agree. I think two and four, I mean, I think might be helpful to keep one or three in there just so people can see, because ultimately you do wind up paying a higher bill doing steps, but it doesn't hit you all at once, right? It allows you to spread that out over time. But the only reason I would keep those in there is maybe just as a reference, but honestly, I would agree. I mean, we, we brought the citizens in, they told us, we really think it's better to do it from a stepped way. I, I don't see any reason to consider otherwise. I think we should go with what they brought to us. So that would be my opinion. So I would say two or four might be helpful to have one of the ones for reference, just so people can see the end impact, but I don't know if that's necessary or not.
I, I always like having that, if we do nothing comparison, if we don't do anything, this is what you're looking at. So I think that that's valuable information, trustee Peter.
Well, I think part of the whole thing with the stepped increase, besides not just punching somebody straight between the eyes, was it gives you time for what the long-term things that we had of finding some creative avenues to increase the fund balance without constantly taking more and more and more from the residents. So with the stepped increase, this is assuming you do nothing else, right? Is that you end up at this dollar amount over time, but you have that many years to also again, utilize your roundtable, utilize the citizens here that, I mean, we have amazing people in this town that could step up with a lot of different amazing ideas and things that they know.
And our pro, our thought process was state legislatures and federal legislatures change. And so there's new policies coming down the pipe all the time. So how do we utilize that versus, you know, for ten years, so.
And maybe we don't end up at the sixty dollars because we've come up with all these other ways to mitigate the cost to the residents.
Because you're looking for big money.
Right. And little money. We take all the money.
You guys, you're going to need ten million.
Time to make dollars, yes.
You know, maybe Bob comes back and says, good news, we saved ten million dollars.
Really didn't need the loader.
Right.
Here's, here's your shovel.
I will, I'll buy a hundred shovels instead.
I'd like to see a sample bill, not like in the format or whatever, but an average winter bill with the rate that we have here in an average, on the water side, sorry, I'm going back to waters. An average bill for all of our users. Residential is really what this would apply to. And to see a whole picture. So when someone's voting or when they're seeing us vote on it, I'd like them to be able to see what their bill would be, because.
Well, it is, but I see what you're, so something that I see sometimes when I'm reading social media or, or comments around, you know, my winter, my winter water bill is already a hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Yeah.
And what I think is actually is that their, is that perhaps the entire
Thing they pay.
bill is a hundred and ninety-five dollars. And then so to, to be able to see the cumulative impact, which also could be scary.
And you know, and you have certain line items on your bill, and I, I guarantee I don't look at mine very often, and most people don't. But if we could show what these rates would be for an average user in the same kind of line items that someone would see on their bill, I think that would mean more to me. It would make me understand.
So combined of winter, summer bills, water bill, new sewer rates, stormwater.
Yes.
You're like the whole picture.
Because that's what everybody reads. And even Troy was looking at his.
My past due bounce.
What, what I would like to hear is what your bill, how your bill is impacted by the two decisions.
And then if you understand how to look at your bill and read it, then you would understand.
Well, and people on, don't delineate between their water bill and their sewer bill. It's one bill. Your water bill is more of that general all encompassing thing. I know for my family, it doesn't go below one twenty. And we don't use more than three thousand gallons a month. I'm pretty sure, like, I know it's going to be one twenty right now. So when it goes up, it's going to be more. There's nothing I can do, but it just is what it is.
Yeah.
So, but it would be good to see that first.
Yeah. I mean, that's what, that's what they'll see. So we can talk these numbers all day long, but at least they see it in the way that they're going to see it. I wouldn't understand it though, otherwise.
So staff, are you lacking anything or do you feel confident that you know what we're asking you to bring back for next week to?
What about you, Mayor Hammond? Are we missing anything?
You guys are happy, right? I'm good. I'm ready.
That's what I was getting right at.
As long as everybody's happy, I'm good. This is going to be great.
So I just want to make sure I hear it properly.
I know.
Options two A and two B, as well as the two C that includes the second tranche of the ARPA. We're going to figure out a way to see how we can how a, a reduced fund balance policy might impact, if it would impact any of these decisions or recommendations that we have, would have. Um, I've heard that eighty-five percent, I wrote that down. I'll, we'll, we'll talk about, we'll talk about that internally and see if that's. And then we will also bring back a plan as, as Patty talked about on, on a suggested steps forward for um, the other follow-up regarding overhead transfers. And then for sewer rates, I see bring back two and four, but making sure to include um, what a comparison between what that ARPA fund does if we use it here versus the water, or we use it in the water versus here. So you guys can make an informed decision on both places, bring a do-nothing comparison. And then bring that, I think that's a, it's a great idea, bring the sample, kind of a sample bill of averages of winter and summer. So you get the whole picture in one with the proposed. And that would be.
Okay, well, yeah, we, we can.
Totally doable.
You got a whole week to make your decision. Actually, we're going to have to, we're going to have to talk to Crystal about maybe extending to Friday.
Is anybody against the general, general fund transfer?
That's a.
I'm not. I, I think we need to do it. We, again, I understand what trustee Whitehouse said, it's not free money. I get it, but it's money that they already had to pay on their property taxes, whether we do anything with it or not.
Yeah.
So it's money that we as a town can sacrifice something else to not also have them have an increase in the water bill. So I would a hundred percent say, I'm a hundred percent.
And that was a big recommendation from our group.
A hundred percent for that one.
Yeah, if there's no opposition to that, you can take two A off your list. We don't need to see any. Yeah, if there's no opposition to that, you can take two A off your list. We don't need to see any examples without a general fund.
Uh, that already includes.
Oh, that's right. Up here.
Oh. Oh, you're right.
Yeah, you're right.
Two A doesn't include general fund up there.
Really, it's against two B.
And two C. Two C, yeah, which would be the.
This might make it easier to model, so I wanna say this.
Yeah, what are you doing here?
So. Really, I only see two options either way, but we need to see where the ARPA is going.
Right.
So, okay, so I just wanna put that out there, so rather than a bunch of new scenarios, we're just saying this or that, with ARPA here or there.
And that comes with the graphs too, right? So you can see more of the long-term effects of having that ARPA money in the water.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be good.
So that, yeah.
Is that question, is this doable? I mean, realistically, is this doable by? So it's a big, it's a heavy lift. I just wanted to get a reality check here, because we can say heaven and earth, but it may not work.
If we, if we end up running into hiccups and can't get it out, you know, at at the very least. You know, we get out the rest of the packet, we get everything but this out on Friday, and then we do an amendment or an addendum over the weekend or Monday morning. And get it out. So you've seen most of this information already, so it's not a surprise to you. Um, and the public's seen the majority of it. So, you know, we'll do our best to get it out and get it ready for you guys by Thursday afternoon, you know, get published packet on Friday. Um, but, and I'll keep you guys posted as to where we're at, roundtable members included. Um, so we'll do our best to get it done. Um, and like I said, if we start running into hiccups, then, you know, maybe, like I said, we just do an addendum to the packet. But we'll get it. I think it's important, important for you guys and important for the residents to get that information out sooner. So that you have, like, from January, the end of January to really the end of February, to get those rates about.
One thing that I forgot to include, and I can't believe none of you brought it up, is, um, when will this take effect?
When will this take?
I thought about that when I submitted, though. It's like, I never even put in there when we're proposing.
It has to take effect before the loan, right?
No, it it doesn't, actually. It doesn't. It does have to, we have to have a uh, an ordinance approved or a resolution approved, right? So they know the the plan forward, but it doesn't have to already be implemented before the loan closes. So. Um, our assumption, my, I, my working assumption is that this would be approved sometime in the month of February, which means it couldn't really, oh, for the sewer rates especially. Has to be by ordinance, so it has to have thirty days. So really, it would go into effect on April one. Usage, starting April one, that people, uh, residents will see on their May bill.
Correct, April usage, May bill.
Okay.
So they see it in May. Please reach out if you have obviously other questions.
Yep, and if we have follow-up questions, we'll be reaching out to all of you. Um, if we, you know, end up working through this and find that we need more information or whatever, we'll all reach out to you guys. We'll figure it out. So thank you so much for your time. I felt like this was a really good discussion, so thank you.
This is what we needed.
Yeah, I feel like we've got some good direction and.
Did you have something you wanted to add there?
No, no.
Okay, she's she's doing math back there.
But we'll talk about tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Speaking tomorrow, we got a special meeting, right?
Yes, tomorrow, tomorrow at six-thirty here in this room. Um.
Yeah.
So I mean, so I've got, I've got trustee McDonald, I've got trustee Kenetson, uh, Mayor Proton Kenetson, um, trustee Gator. I've got, um. Trustee Whitehouse says that he will, are you gonna be here in person, trustee Whitehouse?
Oh, I suppose I could. I mean, it's it's a single item, right?
That would be helpful, just because I need to make sure we have a forum in the room.
You bet.
Um, and I will need either trustee. Gator or Mayor Proton Kenetson to make the motion, since you were the ones that motioned.
You have three, I can motion two.
No. Sure.
No, you can't.
Yes, I can. Already proved that.
They, no, no.
I pulled it too.
You were the vote that killed it.
I voted no. All three votes voted no. One of us can bring it back.
Okay, from what I understood from our town attorney is that needed to be the trustee Gator or Mayor, Mayor Proton Kenetson.
And why? Not that it matters.
Because they made the motion.
We didn't make the motion or second it. Kenny and trustee McDonald made the motion and seconded.
It needs, it needs to be a motion by somebody that voted on the prevailing side, so there are. Three people that voted on the prevailing side of that, which would include the mayor. Um, I think I would prefer that the mayor not make the motion, simply because I like to, I think it's usually better if the mayor doesn't.
I don't know nothing.
Thank you, Dan.
But, so everybody's kind of.
Yeah, I'm gonna screenshot his text messages to me. So to prove that I'm not losing my mind.
Can we help you with any of this here?
You need to adjourn your meeting.
Oh, oh, I'll motion to adjourn the meeting, all favor.
Thank you, guys, for coming out.
Nice job, everybody.
Thank you for signing on.
Thank you, guys, everybody.